Good morning, everybody. We'd like to call to order the special meeting of the Board of Supervisors for April 9, 2018. If we could have a roll call, please.
Supervisor Leopold.
Here.
Coonerty.
Here.
Capet.
McPherson.
Here.
Chair Friend.
Here. If you'll join us in a brief moment of silence on the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chair Friend and members of the Board, we do have one replacement page. This is on Item 3E. There's a new strikeout underline version. Nothing has changed in the actual ordinance, just other than the underline and strikeout did not show through in the original copy, so we've provided a replacement page.
Thank you for that. So we'll move right on to the special meeting agenda. Item 3 is a public hearing to consider recommendations from the Planning Commission regarding proposed amendments to Santa Cruz County Code Chapter 7.128, 13.10, and 16.01, and related amendments to the General Plan Local Coastal Program for Cannabis Licensing and Land Use Regulations for Non-Retail Commercial Cannabis Cultivation, Manufacturing, and Distribution Activities. Proposed amendments to County Code Chapter 13.10 are amendments to the Local Coastal Implementation Program as outlined in the memo of the Planning Director. We have the various set of attachments, the letter of the Planning Commission, the proposed amendments, and strikeout copies for 7.128, and the proposed amendments and strikeout underline copies for 13.10, and the notice of the public hearing. We will now open it up to staff for presentation. Good morning, Ms. Bolster Grant.
Good morning. Robin Bolster Grant, Cannabis Licensing Manager. On March 14, 2018, the Planning Commission made 19 separate recommendations regarding the proposed regulations for the non-retail commercial cannabis program. The Commission's actions built upon the direction provided by your Board to uphold the community's shared values of environmental protection and neighborhood preservation while creating a blueprint for a successful, regulated, local, commercial cannabis industry. A healthy local industry allows reasonable access to medicinal and adult-use cannabis with appropriate safeguards against diversion to children and/or the black market and other negative impacts to our quality of life. We feel the Planning Commission recommendations support the policy goals articulated by your Board and meet the majority of the concerns voiced by the public. One area of concern that has been discussed is the tension between commercial cannabis activities and the expectation that folks have in residentially-zoned neighborhoods. Several of the Commission's motions address this issue by restricting these activities to parcels that have been under cannabis cultivation for several years, eliminating the potential for new development to be approved in residential neighborhoods. Timber production zone protections were also reaffirmed to similarly prohibit new development, reducing the potential harm to sensitive habitats and forest land. We are seeking clarification regarding the date that we should use in order to define cannabis cultivation as existing. We've provided two options dictating either that cultivation be established prior to January 2013 or November 2016, which was the close of our registration period. Recommendations were also made to enhance the incentives for developing our commercial agriculture zone property with commercial cannabis activity by expanding the number of properties that can take advantage of larger canopy restrictions and including owners of CA land to the category of eligibility for cultivation regardless of their own history of farming the land. One of the more problematic areas of concern has been odor. As requested by the Commission, staff extensively researched methods and strategies employed by other jurisdictions. And while there are a number of effective controls that can be applied to indoor cannabis operations, odor from outdoor cultivation remains extremely difficult to mitigate. In our judgment, the recommendations offered by the Planning Commission requiring written concurrence from neighboring property owners would not be an effective mitigation measure. We have offered two alternative approaches, potentially increasing setbacks to neighboring habitable structures or restricting outdoor grows on smaller parcels. In addition, the Cannabis Licensing Office staff have observed measures such as planting lavender or other scented vegetation as an odor buffer. It should be noted that the proposed recommendations limiting new development in residential neighborhoods mean that impacts associated with cannabis cultivation, including odor, have likely existed on these properties for several years. It is also our intention, as articulated in the enforcement plan, to track and report back on all commercial cannabis-related complaints. If specific sites are associated with a disproportionate number of odor complaints, the Licensing Office retains the discretion to withhold license renewals or imposed enhanced license conditions. As you are aware, the Planning Commission also introduced a new cottage license type to address the concerns of smaller, established cannabis farmers. The restrictions attached to this license type were designed to help ensure that only existing, established growers will qualify, and unlike other license types, the property owner is required to live on site. While there may be some potential concerns regarding enforcement issues for these smaller parcels where odor may be more difficult to mitigate, we do recognize that this license type may serve the needs of small farmers that might otherwise be left out of the legal, regulated environment. The Commission also asked staff to consider the issue of nurseries to respond to the needs of cultivators. In our opinion, the existing draft ordinance and proposal to reduce the minimum commercial ag parcel size in order to qualify for greater canopy limits provides adequate opportunities for those cultivators seeking to establish cannabis nurseries without additional ordinance revisions. As we've said many times, the process of creating a brand-new licensing program is, by definition, iterative and, to some extent, a work in progress. We expect to come back over time with refinements as we learn from our experiences. Staff is available to answer questions or discuss our research into any of these issues further, and we seek your policy direction at this meeting so that we can return with the draft ordinance for our first reading at your April 24 meeting. Thanks very much. That's all I have.
Thank you. Are there any brief questions from Board members before we open up this public hearing? It'll obviously come back for deliberation from the Board. So what we're going to do is we're going to open the public hearing just to give you sort of a brief overview of what we'll be doing today. We're not going to be adopting any ordinances today. This is an opportunity for you to provide input into what has been a pretty extensive process for us, but hopefully we're coming toward the end of that process. We have received all of your letters. We have received all the Coalition letters, so just to keep that in mind before you give your testimony today, that it's something that we have seen. And we will take a break at 10:45 and again at noon if needed, depending upon how long today's meeting goes. So please do line up. We will afford two minutes for every speaker, and we will open now the public hearing. Good morning. Welcome.
Good morning. Thank you. My name is Steve Holman. I've lived in Bonny Doon for 42 years, and I have some background in environmental health. I wanted to reiterate what I have said before, which is there are two streams that serve Davenport that emanate in Bonny Doon, and there are seven streams in the San Lorenzo Valley that emanate in Bonny Doon, and two springs that serve the San Lorenzo Valley Water District, and there are three streams and one spring that serve the city of Santa Cruz that emanate in Bonny Doon. Also, the water that goes down these streams towards the San Lorenzo River in the San Lorenzo Valley, that which is not diverted by the San Lorenzo Valley Water District joins the San Lorenzo River, and it has the potential to flow to the ocean or also to be diverted by the city of Santa Cruz. So all of Bonny Doon is a huge watershed for much of the North County, pretty much from north of Boulder Creek to Davenport and from Davenport to Santa Cruz to Live Oak. The water supply depends on the water that falls on Bonny Doon from rainfall. It's at least 50% of the supply of those areas. So I think it's really important to make sure that all of Bonny Doon is protected from unlawful grows and from clearcutting of the forest and from rodenticides and fertilizers and things that can enter the streams. So while it's been proposed that there be the Coastal Commission plus one mile, I think that's an artificial construct because it doesn't include all the headwaters of all the streams that serve all the water systems. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Holman. Good morning. Welcome. Feel free, if anybody else would like to address us during the public hearing, feel free to line up if it's okay with you.
Good morning. My name is Tom Hearn. I'm here representing the Rural Bonny Doon Association. The RBDA supports having the Board adopt all of the recommendations of the Planning Commission. We see this as a compromise, but we would prefer stronger measures to protect the environment, especially in the area of zone timber production and residential neighborhoods. However, the political reality is that these measures are the best, we believe, that can be achieved at this point. Even if all of these measures are adopted, Santa Cruz County will still have the least restrictive commercial cannabis regulations in the state and probably in the country. A point I feel that needs to be emphasized is the enforcement of these regulations. Without rigorous enforcement, this regulatory experiment will is doomed to fail. Given that the estimate by county planning staff puts the number of folks that are willing to submit to abiding by the regulations to grow cannabis legally is less than 10%, the total number of growers in the county, the total number of growers in the county, the legal growers won't stand a chance to survive, never mind thrive, if the illegal trade isn't curbed. And the rest of the community will continue to see the environmental degradation and horrible wildfires that have already been the result of illegal cannabis trade. Again, we support the adoption of the Planning Commission's recommendations in whole. I'd like to thank the Board of Supervisors for taking the time to listen to the community and in considering our concerns. This is one of the most important land use regulations that this county will be facing in many years. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Eric Kaufman, Coalition for Environmental Santa Cruz. First, I'd like to thank all of your Supervisors for appointing the wonderful Planning Commissioners. We basically, as a group, are pleased with the outcome and the 19 motions they made that went on to you. As for the Planning Department, we feel they got it right on most of the motions, most of the information they brought forth to implement the plan, though on the odor issue, we think you missed the mark. We think that there are ways to measure odor that are scientific, and you can use to make judgments that are both clear to cannabis growers and to people living near them, and there's other ways to mitigate. We've been saying this for about three years. See, our focus now has sort of moved to the legal system and the fact that only 760 people have gone forward with this program despite a lot of work that's gone into it. And so our concern is how are we going to deal with the non-growers who will still be operating outside of the system? And we don't see any budgetary things on that, so that concerns us quite a bit. We think that there should be record-keeping on par with what goes on in Santa Clara County. We've looked at different counties and what they've done with their cannabis programs, and we think there are examples that are clear for getting people information about what types of things are going on, how many incidences, and we think that there should be public recording, that this should happen maybe biannual basis. Let's see. Lastly, rodenticides. We know the state has outlawed rodenticides, but we really don't think that addresses the problem. Even the Planning Commission suggested that we do one inspection in a three-year period. That won't be sufficient to take care of the rodenticide problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Bob Strickland, another gray beard from Bonny Doon and said in aerospace, "Listen to the gray beards." But I sat through the Planning Commission meeting the other day, god, the marathon meeting, and I listened to the Planning Commissioners who had very strong opinions in generally the areas of protecting neighborhoods from land use change and protecting timberland. They came up with the 19 options, for lack of a better word. They were pretty much unanimous on all of them. The nay votes generally were in the realm of they didn't feel that the recommendation of the Commissioners was strong enough to protect neighborhoods in timberland, and there was a couple of no vote. I then looked at what came back from the Planning Department staff, and I felt like they were walking back on what the Commissioners had spent the entire day talking about. So I urge you to look carefully at what the Commissioners requesting, and then look at what the Planning staff wrote, and there's some backoffs, like a Level 5 became a Level 4 review, a reference to the enforcement. We've already got a form online. I've tried to do a dry run of looking at that form, and you really cannot fill that form out for this cannabis thing. If you see a fence that's too tall, I can take a picture. I can tell you the dress, and I can say, "Go look at that fence. It's too tall." I can't find the pot around the area. I know that right now on Felton Empire Grade, you can smell pot. It's not overwhelming. It's not really obnoxious, but it's there. The closest private land I can find is at least 1,000 feet away, and that's my yard. There's no pot there. I've been locked out of having to keep my windows closed for a whole week because of a pot grow that was about a quarter mile away, and now you can't see that using Google Earth because it's in a warehouse.
Thank you. Thank you for those comments. Good morning. Welcome.
I'm Walt Haynes from Corlelis. The big problem I'm having with the changes that the staff is recommending now is from 2013 to 2016. The reason for the 2013 was because of the green rush, because the county opened their arms to cannabis. So if you change it to 2016, all of these out-of-state and out-of-county people who come around, especially in our area, bought up the land are now eligible, and this whole 2013, 2016 was to stop this green rush. And so I really have a problem with changing that. And also the TP zoning, you know, I still have a problem with the TP zoning having any of this in there because this is what really affects us. And the SU parcels and the TP parcels in the mountains are the same. They have the forest. It's all the same kind of land, and so SU is another problem, but this mainly my issue is the 2013 to 2016. Thanks.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Nancy Macy. I live in Boulder Creek, and I'm here for myself and my family, as well as speaking as Chair of the Valley Women's Club's Environmental Committee for the San Lorenzo Valley. We are very grateful for this public process. We feel strongly that the planters and the Planning Commission have worked hard to provide thoughtful recommendations for you to consider. We, too, agree with the gentleman who just spoke that 2013 is the year you should be choosing, and I wanted to point out that there's still one major problem, and that is the language of no duty to enforce. That clause is patently absurd. It's still in there. We urge that you, as our Supervisors, insist that it be removed and that the county actually embrace its duty to enforce its own laws and hence to plan how to effectively enforce the regulations so that the legal growers can be supported and the illegal growers can be removed. Right now, under the cannabis licensing website, under enforcement, all there is is a public complaint form. There's nothing else talking about it. Because in the past, we haven't always, the county hasn't always enforced these regulations to protect the environment. Too many variances, administrative variances. I'm not clear whether administrative variances would still be allowed, and I think they should be forestalled. They inherently undermine the requirements. We thank you for considering the long-term and cumulative impacts on the environment in our neighborhoods. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good morning. Welcome.
Good morning. My name is Melody Meyer. I'm the President of Source Organic. I'm a local, non-cannabis business that supports common sense regulations. I'm here to advocate for a safe, environmentally responsible, social-conscious, and economically sustainable cannabis trade in the county. I support the written comments presented by Green Trade Santa Cruz, and I want to highlight a few of those. The county has taken some good steps to ensure that existing compliant operators avoid serious business disruption by allowing them to seek a temporary state licensing prior to the adoption of a final ordinance. Please expedite this process and move forward on the proposed ordinance as soon as possible. More delays in adopting an ordinance will have adverse effects, adverse consequences on the ability of local operators to seek and receive annual state licensing in a timely manner. I urge the Board to provide direction to the county licensing manager to fast-track local authorization, to allow limited operations for existing eligible non-retail cannabis businesses as they begin the local and state licensing application process. California Voters approved Prop 64, which was based on a comprehensive state regulatory framework. Having served on a CDFAs Advisory Committee for 10 years, I watched this process unfold. I believe there are compelling reasons for the county to adopt state language and definitions specific to cannabis operations. Collaboration between state and local agencies will be significantly enhanced if everyone uses the same terms and defines them the same way. I have many friends who have cultivated cannabis over the years in small-scale cottage-like settings, including a cottage-style license type will help those producers transition and reduce overall unregulated activities. This will help maintain a sustainable amount of economic activity that will support residents, businesses, and consumers. In summary, expedite the process and move forward on the proposed ordinances as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Welcome back.
Thank you. My name is Brenda Chadwick. Happy to have an opportunity to talk to you all again about advocating for smaller cottage license type here in the county. I missed by four minutes getting this packet included today, so I'll hand it over when I'm finished with my comment. In the packet, I have your original Chair Friend and Supervisor Leopold, your letter creating the Cannabis Cultivation Choices Committee, and that's when I first got started and involved in all this, the C4 Committee. And that was a real necessary step. So many people in the county had let it be known that the ban was not a good way to go, and I'm glad that you did that. I have a few other things, letters, you know, talking about home occupation, the Sentinel's first article that the registration started. Then things started to get a little wonky because during that registration process, many things were changed. The fee went from $3,500 down to $500. The Type 1C specialty cottage license became law in the state, and I came a number of times to encourage you to extend the registration, get the information out to people, because I didn't really think that it had been. I have my comments to the draft EIR, talking again about cottage licensing and inclusion. And I also have a tiered level for that license type. So I am a member of the Green Trade Board, and I totally support their position paper on it, and I encourage you to take a look at my packet.
Thank you.
Hi. Pat Mello, Director of Green Trade. I also had the pleasure of serving on the C4 Committee and being involved in all the fun that we've had for the last few years. So we've got some really positive things that I think are on the table. First, the cottage license. I think that we've been talking about that, talking about that, and we finally got the first step towards that. And so I really want to applaud everybody who's been working on that. I'd really like to compliment the Planning Commissioners for recognizing that, some community groups, community prevention partners for recognizing that, and a lot of the Board and their staffers for recognizing that. So I hope we can go forward. It doesn't completely fix the problem of all the small folks, but it starts to recognize their existence, and so thank you for that. Others have talked about our Green Trades, you know, need to extend this temporary licensing process to everyone who's attempting to get into this and is in good standing because we're getting to spring planting season right now, and we want to be able to let as many folks into this as we possibly can so that this conversation that we're having in the room today about what are we going to do about the folks who just don't want to follow the rules, well, first, we need to divide, figure out who those folks really are, and we need to get as many folks self-regulating as we possibly can to keep the group that is outside of regulations as small as it can be and as manageable as it can be so that we can address all the neighborhood concerns, environmental concerns, community concerns that the cannabis industry shares. You know, the last thing, there's a couple of pieces of the Planning Commissioners' recommendations that are not going to work. One of them is the idea about having to get permission from all your neighbors as proof that it doesn't smell. I think that there is technology out there, and we don't want to have that turn into some sort of extortion clause. Also, the special-use stuff needs to get fixed, as well as the timber production.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, Supervisors. I'm Bob Berlage, representing Big Creek Lumber Company. You folks have a difficult challenge. Your decisions are going to impact this county for the foreseeable future, so it's a tough job. We've submitted numerous documents over the past couple of years. A recommendation is to not allow on timber production zones. Timber Productions was created by the Timberland Taxation Reform Act in 1976 specifically to create a zone where the first best use and the primary use are growing and harvesting of timber. That act also severely limited what else could be done on TP parcels, and with a little bit of leeway for counties, but I'm certain the legislature never intended for you to authorize an economic activity on TP lands that would supersede the growing and harvesting of timber. We agree with the comments that were submitted to you by the Santa Cruz County Farm Bureau, and in Ms. Walker's letter, she pointed out a number of other counties that have forestlands that have made a decision to not allow cultivation on TP for reasons that your Board understands. It's the most difficult area to monitor and enforce, and it's absolutely the area where the likelihood of environmental harm is likely to occur. I'm happy to answer any questions, and good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Berlage. Good morning. Welcome back.
Good morning. Thank you for having the meeting today. I'm just going to jump right in and address the blanket policy of requiring a Level 5 permit for all properties except CA zone. That will inadvertently create a bottleneck in the licensing system and prevent the licensing manager and staff from effectively approving permits in a timely manner. For example, there are properties that clearly should not require a Level 5 permit. When the planning recommended that CA properties be addressed the same as A properties. So you have an indoor cultivation CA property, no limit on size, Level 3, but then you have a warehouse that up to 2,000 square feet, Level 5. It just clearly doesn't make sense when addressing warehouses. It should be streamlined. Current law would just be a change-of-use permit on warehouses, so minimum, I think, you know, Level 3, no limit on size. As well as CA properties outdoor would be a Level 4, yet A properties would be a Level 5. It just seems arbitrary to just do a blanket policy. These smaller cottage licenses will have a huge barrier of entry on cost, time. It just doesn't make sense to wipe out everything and make one thing. I think we should take a closer look at what the planning had recommended and make something that clearly makes more sense and is reasonable. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good morning. Welcome.
Good morning. My name is Richard Bartel. I live in the Aptos Hills. I have two comments. The first is, I've attended a lot of these meetings. I attended the Planning Commission meeting. I hear a lot of people talk about the problems that they're having with commercial cannabis grows in their residential environments. I myself have not heard anybody come in and talk about why it's important to allow this to continue. We've got a lot of area in this county where these grows could happen. The space is there. Why put it in a residential environment? The second is an experience I have, and I'm curious whether any commercial grow is going to see the same experience. Several years ago, my wife and I decided to build an ADU on our property. One of the requirements that came back from the Planning Department was, "Well, what color are you going to paint this? We need to make sure that this is compatible with the neighborhood that you're living in." How many people are going to be concerned about the color of a hoof? How many people are going to be concerned about the color of a hoop house that's going to be in the property next to me? I don't think white is very compatible. If you want to verify it, go onto Google Earth, look at this county. I don't think you can see too many houses. You can see a lot of hoop houses, little white rectangles. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning. Welcome back.
Good morning, Kevin Collins. I really appreciated the effort that the planning commission put into their recommendations to the board. They were very thoughtful. I generally support all of them. Other than the—a couple of changes made by the department, subsequently, I think that the cottage grows still should have a Level 5 review. This is merely the zoning administrator. It's not a full planning commission review. Residents deserve this. I was—when I read the EIR some months ago, I was shocked by the fact that the water resources were virtually unaddressed. Water pollution was not addressed. Water demand was not addressed. This is something that needs to be really understood. This is being eliminated from all the urban areas of the county, including the Highway 9 corridor, SoCal, et cetera, et cetera. But the water resource impacts are going to be serious if this expands to the level that it's anticipated. This issue is also going to require a level of code enforcement that this county has never demonstrated. This is a new kind of development. It's not the same thing as whether or not someone puts an addition on their house. It's a transformational land use decision. It's going to require—when you send an inspector out on a non-compliant site out in the middle of, you know, the high end of the San Lorenzo or the SoCal watershed, they're going to need an escort from the Sheriff's Department. This is going to be quite expensive. We've got 750 people that are registered in some way. We've got thousands of people unregistered. Unless that situation is brought into compliance with these regulations, then this—this square dance we've been having here in this room is not really going to mean very much. So you're going to have to prepare for actual code enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome back.
Thank you. I'm Phyllis Strickland, Bonny Doon resident for decades. I was pleased to see the recommendations that the planning commission came back for, and I felt really heard as RA, a residential agricultural community member. And I was—I just want to point out that the planning commission was unanimous in terms of wanting to protect residential neighborhoods from especially manufacturing above a Level 1. The only dissent was that they didn't want any manufacturing at all, one member of the commission in RA. And I just would really like you to pay attention to their recommendations and the strength of those recommendations in protecting residents in the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Jamie Padilla, and I'm with United Farm Workers. And we're here supporting the development of a socially responsible and sustainable cannabis industry in Santa Cruz. Santa Cruz County is a really special place for our organization. We have members throughout the county, and we have a special relationship with a farmer here. It's with Swatton Berry Farms. We represent those workers and have a collaborative and productive relationship with the farmer where everyone benefits. And we look forward to developing those types of partnerships with cannabis producers as well. And we are collaborating with folks from Green Trade and just want to be here and support the adoption of an ordinance in Santa Cruz.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Christopher Carr. I am here on behalf of local compliant farmers, and also I am a board member with Green Trade. And Green Trade is Santa Cruz's largest coalition of cannabis businesses and supporters. I just wanted to commend the work of the planning commission and the Board of Supervisors. This is an ongoing process, and I also wanted to extend a cordial invitation. I submitted my public comment via email, but I am currently a Cannabis Environmental Steward, Specialty Outdoor on TPZ zone land. And I think I would cordially invite my comrades here from Big Creek Lumber and the board to potentially either submit photos and demonstrate there are—some of these parcels are 40, 90-plus acres. So there's adequate space to facilitate wholesome, environmentally-friendly timber harvest, and there are also open spaces to facilitate specialty regenerative outdoor cultivation. So I think there's room here for all of us to coexist and to partner. And if we don't act fast and ensure an administrative process that provides the safe harbor for all our local operators in good standing, we're going to lose a lot of these local businesses to Monterey County, Santa Barbara County, San Luis Obispo County, because those counties are up and running. So I just want to be solution-driven and provide an olive branch and cordially invite anyone interested. I submitted an email, so you have my email, and anyone else. I have business cards, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Good morning. Welcome back.
Mark Reel, Larkin Valley. And you may remember that I live in the floor of Larkin—floor of Larkin Valley, and there are two continuous A-zone parcels that are surrounded by RA or like parcels within this coastal zone one mile designation. Although a grower began cultivation after 113, who should be disqualified from further licensing under this ordinance, my concern is that should these properties be sold, a grower that could be licensed or is licensed would move in, grow, and under their license without consideration of the neighbor's concerns. Thus, licensing should be considered by the lot, not the neigh—and the neighbor's concern, regardless of the lot's designation, and not just the grower's suitability. Preliminary notice and due process for the neighborhood to contest potential licensing should be under this ordinance, under these circumstances. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning. Welcome back.
Hi, good morning. My name's Kathy Toner. I'm also grateful for all the public input and all the hard work, and I also want to commend the planning commission and all their input. I would like to also urge and support the adoption of their recommendations with a few suggestions. Even with the adoption of those recommendations, we would still be looking at having the most permissive regulatory framework in Santa Cruz County, as was mentioned in the state and possibly beyond. So I think that we've come a long way towards accommodating the interest and making some serious concessions. And so I'm here to say that I think enough is enough. We should move forward with this and not allow further weakening of this—of the proposed ordinance. I would include—I would endorse the comments that were made to keep the Level 5 review for the cottage license. It is only fair. A couple of concerns, though, that remain. The issue of enforcement has been raised, and I really think, unless I've missed it, I don't see the enforcement plan before us. I don't understand how we can consider and adopt—how you can adopt an ordinance with all the issues that have been raised without knowing what that enforcement plan is going to look like. So unless I'm missing it, I would say no. No enforcement plan, no ordinance. I would say that needs to be in place, and we need to have a chance to look at that for all the issues that have been raised. And that includes being fair to those who want to participate in regulation. We need to really know how we're going to create an equal playing field for them through serious enforcement. So no plan, no ordinance. Robin mentioned up front, and I think it's very true, this is going to be a learning process, and we've seen the law of unintended consequences from policy decisions in the past. So I would recommend a serious monitoring and evaluation mechanism be added to this, some sort of annual report, as was mentioned, as being done in Santa Clara County, some public hearing. I think every year, we should know how we're doing on some of these important indicators. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning. Welcome back.
Good morning, Supervisors. Mary Jo Walker. First of all, I wanted to thank you for taking the time to very conscientiously and thoughtfully deliberate the subject. I appreciate it personally. I'm going to reiterate some of the comments I've made in the past because they're important to me. Please protect our rural communities. This is a goal that your board stated time and again, and allowing commercial grows, large commercial grows in RA and SU does not protect our neighborhoods. Other similar counties do not allow this. Also, preserve our timber production zones. This is where our water comes from. This is where much of our wildlife lives, and this is where it is most difficult to enforce. Do not allow Class 2 or Class 3 manufacturing in RATP or SU zones. These are commercial operations, and they can be dangerous. I'm still unclear as to how the licensing officer is going to track cumulative environmental impacts, which, as you know, is required. For example, the cumulative water use of a particular—in a particular water district. I don't understand how that's going to be done. Please eliminate the no duty to enforce clause. County Council apparently agrees that it serves no legal purpose, and it sends the wrong message. As a matter of fact, I think you should be saying the county does have a duty to enforce. Reporting back to the board is essential for transparency. You and we citizens should receive information regularly about the number of enforcement activities started and completed, the number of licensing licenses granted and denied, et cetera. Protect the coastal zone plus one mile. Please stop modeling our ordinances after Humboldt and Mendocino County. We are not like those counties. Within the past couple of years, a number of more similar counties have passed ordinances that we should be looking at. Odor is still a problem. We've talked about that already. I support the planning commission's recommendations by and large. And finally, enforcement is key. The county has not done a good job with enforcement in the past. This is obvious. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good morning. Welcome back.
Thank you, Board of Supervisors, for all the time and energy. There we go. For putting into the issue of the cannabis cultivation. It's been a long road, a long journey. I think—I also want to say thanks to staff and just that we've done, I think, a pretty good job. I think there's some room for some improvements. Particularly, I want to bring up the Level 5. And coming up with a little data on the Level 5, I believe right now, the current county offers four appointments per week for discretionary applications, the Level 5. If we were to take half the cannabis applications and say that they were to come in for processing, that would be scrutinized up to—we don't figure around 300. It could take anywhere from 60 to 75 weeks just to get an appointment. And that assumes no one else outside of the cannabis industry wants an appointment in Santa Cruz. So the Level 5 does present a certain difficulty in sticking with where we need to be on a state level to be compliant. Also, the odor stuff coming up, and we do support scrubbers in indoor operations and whenever we can deal with the smell of cannabis. But ultimately, neighbors having the ability to control what you do on your property as far as your business goes. Talking to the Act Commissioner and other staff, there's no other industry where that's enforced, or there's a veto power for neighbors to build a veto, your application and license process. So we get into this potential conflict with a neighbor, and they could literally come and shut your operation down because you didn't pay enough road dues, or they didn't pay what you wanted to. So we just want to avoid any extortion-type of scenarios that could come up with regards to that. The last kind of issue is the legal non-conforming stuff.
Thank you.
And in some of the M-zones, we just wanted to have some consideration, potentially, discretion for the licensing official.
Thank you. Good morning.
Hi, everybody. My name's Pete Rich, and I've been a contractor in the San Lorenzo Valley since '82. I first became aware of the situ—of the process when I was in college, in Mount San Antonio College. I took a political science class. After that, I served in the armed forces to defend my country, so I've learned about the process. I fought to defend the process, and I'd like to thank all of you guys. And I'd like to thank all the people here, the people that agree—
Sir, if you could use the microphone.
—the people that disagree, because we're all coming together as a community. So I'm going to use my time right now, as it's rapidly going away, to speak for the unspoken. There's a lot of kids that have been disenfranchised. There are a lot of kids that are counter-cultural. There are a lot of kids struggling with mental issues and with drug issues. And I've seen the cannabis industry take these kids in, and I've seen their lives transformed. I've seen them learn a work ethic, learn a job skill, and I've seen them be able to social mobility. They live in houses now, not in cars and tents. So I'm very aware of that. I've also seen the influence of you guys and the guys that do and the guys that don't get along always. I've seen the industry clean itself up and self—nobody wants—we all love the mountains. We all love Santa Cruz. We all love each other.
Let's pretend that that microphone's for you. Sir.
We're brothers. We need to work together to—
Sir, I need you to use the microphone. I need you to use the microphone.
Clean and safe and full of opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you. Henry Clay would be proud. Good morning. Welcome.
Good morning. Rick Rose. I want to talk to something similar to what Pete was saying, and that's a special use, the SU—the SU zoning. Currently, the SU zoning requires agricultural quarry or heavy industry. I believe probably 90 to 95% of small operations fall in this category, and this would pretty much eliminate their ability to function as responsible cultivators. And it appears that, you know, perhaps those kinds of restrictions would lean to something akin to green lighting, black market-type of things. And I believe that it's one of—the key elements in coming up with this document is to avoid that kind of thing and to get people out of that area into—the light and to conform with what the requirements of the county are. So, thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Koffis. Welcome back.
Thank you. Good morning to you, and thank you all for sitting through this process, helping this process move along. I particularly appreciate the fact that you are holding a special meeting on this issue. It demonstrates the concern that you have, the desire to hear from everybody. I think that no one can fault this board for not being inclusive and deliberative in this process. I'd also like to express my appreciation to the county staff, from the CAO's office, County Council, the planning department, and of course, the cannabis licensing office for doing a tremendous amount of work, often with mixed messages directing them. So I think everybody, even opponents of this plan, have been thoughtful and conscientious in their efforts to make this work. There are two particular issues I'd like to address, and I think are the most important things that you can do today. The first is to direct staff to include the cottage license type. This is really going to be important to get a handle on the unregulated market, including people in this very small license type will go a long way to relieving the enforcement obligations that will be—that will fall to the licensing office. The second deals with that, and that is to direct the staff to come up with an expedited process to deal with the—what are going to be a very comprehensive and onerous application process, first with the cannabis licensing office and then with the planning department. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Koffis, I had a question about your letter regarding special use—excuse me—zoning. You were concerned that the—excuse me—the changes for SU parcels significantly reduces the number of parcels eligible, and you didn't go into more explanation, so I was wondering if you could just say a little bit about that.
Well, the—eliminating—this is the best way to put this. About 40% of eligible parcels will be eliminated with—if the restrictions on SU are adopted.
Is that because of the acre size?
No, it's because of the underlying designation. And I'd like to remind everybody that—I mean, I've been 71 years a California resident, and— and I've seen agricultural, the underlying zoning for most of California was agriculture. I've seen that disappear in a lot of ways. I mean, the Santa Clara Valley used to be pretty full of agricultural activities. Now the best crop is a condominium. And so I, you know, I'd like to see us preserve small-scale agriculture of all types throughout the county. I mean, that is the trend, distributed agriculture.
Mr. Koffis, this is a very specific question. It's not an opportunity to have an additional commentary.
Excuse me.
So Supervisor Lee pulled, if we could narrow what that question specifically is and have the speaker specifically answer that. Otherwise, we'll move on to the next speaker.
I thought that the Planning Commission came up with a fairly elegant way of acknowledging people who are good stewards at their current zone parcels, but it would prevent it in the future. And I'm wondering if their recommendations affect current growers or your concern is future ability for people to be able to grow on SU parcels?
Well, today, in effect, we're concerned about the current growers.
And so does the Planning Commission's recommendation affect the current growers or does your concern have to do with those in the future?
It has to do with the current growers. You know, the future we advocate for is no minimum parcel size and no zoning restrictions. Agricultural activities are permitted on every zone parcel in this county. And cannabis should be no different.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Stephen Beals. I represent several stakeholders in Santa Cruz County. I would like to briefly speak on the 200-foot setback requirement. Requiring a 200-foot setback is a mistake. Allowing for a reduction of that to 100 feet is insufficient to correct that mistake. Some of the most suitable locations for cannabis operations in Santa Cruz County will be adversely impacted by this requirement. The setback should be eliminated for M zoning districts and other similar zoning districts completely. This is especially true in instances where you have legal non-conforming habitable dwellings in close proximity to intensive use zoning districts. And I think the 100-foot reduction is inadequate. So when you're looking at the setback requirements, I hope that you take that into consideration, allow staff some discretion to reduce the setbacks. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Hi. My name's Isaiah. I've been a Santa Cruz resident my entire life. Yeah, so I do appreciate how we've progressed this ordinance and I appreciate everyone's work we've put into it. I guess I want to echo what Steve was saying about, you know, we're trying to move into more industrial zoning for indoor cultivation. And there are legal non-conforming structures within very close proximity to a lot of those sites that are very suitable for indoor cultivation. So in the spirit of trying to move in more of a commercial realm, you know, that kind of inhibits us to do that. And another point that was spoken earlier is that it seems for as many Level Five reviews that are going to be necessary to accommodate everyone who's applying, it doesn't seem like Santa Cruz County has the capacity to deal with all of them. And I don't think there's really a mechanism to really go through that many Level Five reviews in a time proximity that allows us to comply with state regulation and be able to get our state license and be in compliance. So those are two things for me that stand out. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. Eric McCall, Blue Belly Consulting Group, Green Trade Board member and a representative of folks trying to do right. There's one group that hasn't been represented yet and I would like to read a comment from them. It's the legendary breeders who are ahead of cultivators. Without breeders, you don't have a food chain. We would like to recommend an addition to the nursery license called a heritage cannabis license to protect seeds, mother plants, and a trust for tax-free research, seed and strain preservation, and legacy breeding. We should be allowed up to 50 percent of a commercial cannabis because typically breeder operations are kept separate from commercial cannabis operations. You're in a phenom hunt, you're looking for information, you may have multiple generations being bred that are not destined for commercial sale. You can track and trace them to state-approved destruction, but then that portion, the seeds or the clones, would be useful. So heritage cannabis is an essential element of a vibrant holistic future in the very bones and blood of a sustainable taxable cannabis industry. So we need policy that protects cultivars, cannabis plants from all over the planet, many with special medical effects, environmental adaptations, and some the result of multi-generational breeding work. These living libraries hold our regional heritage. Unique heirloom plants are our best hope for breeding new cultivars. We're known for being the best breeders on the planet. Some of our legendary cultivators who are breeders need more space and they need to be able to flower. It's not a taxable event because they're not selling this hunt. They're selling the cultivars. And those, yes, tax those if you must, but we need to make room in our nursery provision for an heirloom or a heritage research project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Good morning.
Hi, my name is Jim. I live in Felton. I actually live in Long Pico. I live on the southwest side of a slope, a little bit down from the top of the mountain. And one day in the summertime, I was out in my yard and I heard a plane fly over, you know, disappeared, you know, and didn't pay any attention a few minutes later. And then pretty soon it was, and it was, something's not right here. It's like the plane's right over my, do any of you live in the mountains? Do you live in the mountains? Do you live in the mountains? Do you live in the mountains? What about you, Mr. McPherson? Do you live in the mountains? Do you live in the mountains? Okay. So I'm up on this steep road, dead-end road, okay? Private road off another private road in Long Pico Canyon. I see that flash of white and red. So I get up on my roof and I look and there it is. It's a CDF plane, a big one. But not just one, it's got a spotter plane with it, another CDF plane, two. And they're flying around my house. And I look, I go, oh my God, holy, yeah, that's flying around me. It's me. And all of a sudden, I get this fear, this primal fear, oh my God, what am I going to do? Should I run now? Should I grab the cat and put her in the box? And what do I take? And you know what? It turns out, it was a, on the news, they say, oh, it was a barn, it was an outhouse, it was a storage shed, it was a grow. It was less than 1,000 feet away in Zianee, the third fire we'd had in a few years. One house burned totally to the ground, melted trailers. It was in the news, the guy that living in there, this tenant, the grow water, another grow house, escaped with his guitar and his bare feet. Then another year later, the house next door has a honey oil fire. This is a dangerous business and you're about to unleash a force that you can't control. And I just ask you to remember the Oakland Hills Fire.
Thank you.
And a lot of people died in their cars trying to escape that fire on the roads.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Hi, my name's Dennis Farley and I'm here to talk about, when you're raising the time limit to 2016, I feel that anybody who bought property before it was voted legal has the right. They didn't vote or they didn't come here for the green rush, they were here before. And I just feel that they have the right, as anybody else, to apply for a license and to continue on doing it. If you don't allow them, most people will do it anyways. They'll do it. So I think it's better to have control and get the taxes and the money and anyways, that's what I feel.
Thank you. Good morning. Welcome back.
Good morning. My name is Jenna Schinkman. I'm with Coalition Community Prevention Partners. Foremost, I want to thank everyone for including so many different prevention elements through this public process and encourage the retention of them that limit access to youth and just kind of shape the norms in our community. Those include setbacks from sensitive areas, restrictions on advertising and products and packaging that have specific youth appeal, which we've talked about more at other meetings, and just all the site security measures with locking of the product, odor mitigation and lack of visibility and diversion prevention for everyone it's not intended for, but specifically for young people. But CPP also supports finding pathways for these existing small businesses that are being discussed if they meet certain conditions with the best management and operation plan and what the Planning Commission laid out for the Type VII cottage license, since this will allow bringing these businesses into compliance and having regulation, having more environmental monitoring. And yes, we obviously support just kind of the ongoing monitoring for this overall program and making corrections where necessary to ensure success for just the common values that keep coming up over and over again of environmental stewardship, neighborhood compatibility, and health and wellness. So thank you very much for your consideration on this important issue.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Ann Kelson and I represent several stakeholders in Santa Cruz County in addition to serving as the legal advisor to the California Compassion Coalition. And I want to thank the Board of Supervisors for their hard work and also for the staff as well. Just to kind of back up and provide an eagle's eye view of things, currently California has only 15 counties out of 58 that actually have ordinances in place. And to a certain extent, it is a state of emergency. There are other organizations and there are bills in place right now trying to address market collapse, like doing away with the cultivation tax. But here at home, what we need to look at is the fact that we need to have an expedited administrative process to protect the people that already have letters of good standing who've made those efforts and have partnered with the county for several years and are known operators who are not, as far as we know, doing anything other than to diligently comply and to help assist in the creation of this regulatory scheme here in the county. They are in limbo. Some of them have temporary state licenses that may expire. We don't know what will happen when that happens. I'd also like to encourage the county to consistently look to the state for guidance in terms of adopting terms and other uniformity. Right now, the whole state is looking at a patchwork quilt and just looking at those numbers of 15 out of 58 counties just shows you that. In three years' time, cannabis will be viewed the way tomatoes and grapes are. And we don't need to have cannabigotry or other preconceived fears and notions get in the way of looking at the fact that at least 40 percent of these letters of good standing could be eliminated altogether when they've been known farmers out operating and trying to do everything they can in order to bring their business, legitimate businesses, above board. And with that, I just wanted to add with the nuisance clause right now, as it stands, it truly isn't an extortion clause. Typically, nuisances are things that we can measure. They're things that are based on reasonableness and the way that it's written right now, there really is no measure or reasonableness.
Thank you.
Other than, all right.
Thank you.
And I wanted to say there are emergency regulations coming out for compassion by the state and this county should be informed of that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Just trying to get everybody in. Good morning, sir. Welcome.
Hey, good morning. My name's Wes Dewhurst. I'm a cultivator here in the county and a member of the Green Trade Organization. I'm here today to talk about the definition of canopy in the current draft ordinance. The stipulation that canopy can be non-contiguous but must be separated by walls is impractical due to the need to access our plants to work on them. Without walls separating non-contiguous canopy, the ordinance could be read to mean that the entire floor area of a greenhouse structure could be counted as canopy. This would effectively eliminate a large percentage of our already limited canopy because we need that space for aisles, walkways, equipment, and work areas. In most cases, these things would take up at least a third of our greenhouse floor space, so this definition would remove more than 30 percent of our available canopy. The fact that our vegetative plants are counted against canopy limits also introduces undue restrictions on production. Generally speaking, about 25 percent of any given cultivation canopy would be dedicated to propagation and vegetative growth. If this 25 percent is included in our canopy allowance, it would reduce our production by the same percentage. While the most recent draft ordinance allows stacking vegetative plants in multiple layers to ease this burden, this method is not feasible in greenhouses or outdoor production, putting us at a significant disadvantage. I'd like to use our ranch as a case study to illustrate this point. We're fortunate enough to have a CA parcel in South County which qualifies us for the maximum of 22,000 square feet. If we remove a third of that canopy for the space needed for ancillary activities, I'd be left with a little over 14,000 square feet of canopy. If I remove from that the 25 percent of canopy I need for propagation and vegetative plants, I'm left with just under 11,000 square feet of flowering canopy, less than half of my original canopy limit. For those that aren't aware, square footage of flowering canopy is the multiplier through which we establish our projected revenue. So when I have to calculate the potential revenue from our site, I'm using not the intended canopy limit of 22,000 square feet, but the effective flowering canopy of less than 11,000. This means our potential revenue and the potential tax revenue for the county would be cut in half. Simply adopting the state definition of canopy would fix both of those problems. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Does there anybody else that would like to address this in the public hearing? Is there anybody else that would like to address this? Okay. Please step forward. Kirk, if you want to address this, now's your chance.
Hello, my name is Megan Richowski. I'm a resident of District Five. And I'd like to address some personal issues as well as kind of the terrorism around fires in the mountains and such. Of course, there's negligence in every facet of life and regulations placed by the county would hopefully do away with any people who are not qualified or don't know what they're doing in the mountains and causing problems, right? I also ask to address the special use parcel bar in the mountains. It's like you're hearing it's inhibiting up to 40 percent of people. When you asked Mr. Koffis specifically about if it was acreage, that is also an issue for a lot of us. I know a lot of people in our area are afraid and angry about not being able to do what they've been doing for half their lives or more, you know? So thank you very much for taking the time.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Chair, members of the Board of Supervisors, Kirk Schmidt. I'm a greenhouse owner on CA land in South County and also representing the Santa Cruz Farm Bureau. Over this process so far, you've had many changes in the proposed regulation. There are many that have been very beneficial to CA land to open up more grow, more opportunities on CA land, particularly in existing greenhouses. And this would include reduced acreage limitations that was proposed by the Planning Commission as well as clarification of including ownership as well as farming for three years as a criteria for obtaining a license on CA land. However, there, as other people have spoken today, there's a significant deviation between the state definition of canopy, which is relatively simple and quite clear, but is set out in detail as to the difference between a flowering canopy and a non-flowering nursery crop. The provisions in the ordinance before you would be totally different and would create confusion both in your enforcement, the state's enforcement, and more particularly when you get to the issue of taxation. You would be taxing at one rate and the state would be taxing at another rate and it would be difficult for the growers to distinguish between the two because of the entirely different definition. It would be easier for Santa Cruz County to adopt the state definition. If you feel that the size limitations are too great, then change the size, but don't come up with a new definition. Lastly, the issue of existing greenhouses on CA land is somewhat confused here because in some parts of the ordinance, they're called structures and other parts are called greenhouses. But structures require odor abatement and scrubbers and greenhouses, the large greenhouses in South County average of over 100,000 square feet each and it's impossible to have a scrubber. Thank you very much.
Mr. Schmidt, can I just ask you a question?
Yes.
The, it's been suggested that the nursery definition should also conform to the state definition. Do you have a point of view about that?
I believe that if you adopted both the flowering definition and the nursery definition and the state definition, it would be much more clear for enforcement and for taxation. The definition, the distinction between the two is whether it's flowering or not. While I have talked to staff and they've been concerned about the ability to distinguish this, as a farmer in a greenhouse that used to be full of roses, I can assure you it's easy to distinguish between a flowering plant and a non-flowering plant.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Good morning. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Isaac and I'm a lifelong resident of Santa Cruz County. And there is a couple of topics I would like to discuss. The first one being the Level Five for the zoning development. And I feel like that would just give the neighbor the power to veto your license and no other ag businesses are subject to this kind of scrutiny. And I truly believe it's an extortion clause. I think a Level Four would be more permissible where you have to post a sign on your road where neighbors have to drive by and are aware of the fact of what's going on. There are a few positive things that I would like, I like There are a few positive things that I would like, I liked in the ordinance, and one of them being the co-location aspect of it and allowing the nursery square footage to allow us for that. And the last thing I would like to discuss is a more uniformed approach to the whole dynamic of this whole thing going forward. So, basically, the commercial ag is being pushed ahead of everybody else because of less strict regulations. And so, I would just like to see the RA and everybody else, the other types of zoning, to get a more fair approach and get a level playing field with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to address us? Is there anybody else beyond the speaker that would like to address us? Okay.
Hello, my name is Sandipan Balachandran. I registered for the license back when it was available. I actually live in Boulder Creek. I live on a property which is zoned residential agricultural. And this is, since people talked about the cottage cannabis, this is a prime example of my situation because it is compliant within a lot of the setbacks, even your 200-foot, pretty ridiculous setback of a house on a neighboring parcel. It is compliant within that, but the only problem with this plot is that it is not five acres. And knowing the neighbors and where they are located, we've been living on this property for three years, that it is really unfortunate that a property like this, which is actually complies to a lot of the regulations put forth, except for one, and would be unusable for cannabis or honestly, any other type of agriculture because it's too small for wine or vegetables. So, that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anybody else beyond the speaker that would like to address us during this public hearing? Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Seth Smith. I live in Capitola. Last week, I'm sorry, I'm with Santa Cruz Veterans Alliance. We're one of the state licensed cannabis cultivation, manufacturing, distribution, retail operations here in Santa Cruz County and the city of Watsonville. Last week, we gave a tour of our facility in Santa Cruz County to our congressman, Jimmy Panetta, who came through, walked around, looked at everything we were doing, talked with us a lot about what we were up to, the challenges we're facing, different advocacy efforts that we're involved in, the effect of taxes on patients, all that kind of stuff. It was a very good discussion. We would like to offer the opportunity, as I'm sure many of these folks have and would also agree, we'd like to offer the opportunity to any of the members of the Board of Supervisors to also come by to our facilities, either here in Santa Cruz County or in the city of Watsonville, so that we can show you kind of what this looks like on the ground, so that you have a better frame of reference for some of these issues that people are bringing up to you today. That's a standing invitation for any of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Morning.
Good morning. My name's Julie Thompson. I am a landowner in the mountains and I'm here encouraging and advocating for SU lands to be allowed to apply for licenses, like many of my other neighbors here. There are many people that have been growing for years that we all know very responsibly to the environment, to the water around them. And we should be allowed to now have legal licenses to continue our craft in the mountains. Thank you.
Thank you. Morning. Welcome.
Good morning. My name is Glenn Astrov. I'm a property owner in Bonny Dune, and I have been, my family has been for generations. I'm here to talk to you about my concerns about the Level 5 review, the length of time that it's going to take to get through this. And my big concern is that the temporary licenses that are held now will run out. And the people put into positions of they have invested into this, my big concern is the black market growing. And when people do go towards the black market, these are the problems in Bonny Dune I see with neighbors not respecting everything that goes in that we're fighting for. So, I just wanted to say my concern is the time period, if we could push that forward and stomp out these black market opportunities. Thank you. I appreciate your time and I appreciate everybody.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to address us? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Once you've spoken once, you can't speak again, but thank you. And we'll bring it back to the Board, and the Board can have questions and comments, and we'll also have action. What I would recommend that the Board do from an efficiency standpoint, there may be items that are relatively non-controversial in this set of Planning Commission recommendations that I think we should just take in one motion from an efficiency standpoint. I think then we can move on the other items to go in more depth on. So, I'll start with Supervisor, we'll just go down the line. We'll start with Supervisor Capit, if you'd please start us off.
Okay.
Your microphone might need to be turned on.
A real simple question, I think, in the beginning. It is tax time. People are filing their taxes. And people are going to have to put down their income and they're going to have to put down their expenses. When we're dealing with federal tax, they're going to have to put down taxes and, you know, income that comes from marijuana. How does that look? How are they going to be able to talk to the IRS when it comes to explaining that the income that they're getting is something that's actually contrary to federal law? And we're not going to be able to help them explain that with the IRS.
No, the short answer to that question is I don't know. We don't do tax, personal tax law for folks, and we don't get involved with IRS regulations and what it is that they're going to have to declare to the IRS. That's up to each individual to do.
You bet. Okay, but I guess just a little bit farther on that, state law would trump, let me rephrase that, state law would override county law? And federal law would override state law?
That's, in a preemption analysis, that would make sense, but, you know, the county can pass laws where the state has, or the feds have not taken the field, so to speak. Does that make sense?
It makes sense, except, you know, federal law kind of changes with each election. And that's why I rephrased the word "federal law trumps" state law. You see what I mean? So, could that change in the future? We could have a shift one way or the other?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Okay. And I'll try to make this brief, but I'll go through a few items here. We share the benefit and the burden with everything. And everything that I've looked at in the past, I try to make sure that District 4 gets its share of the benefit along with the burden. I've seen it happen with affordable housing. We've gotten our share and other parts of the county are also building it and sharing the burden. And the benefit, of course, is affordable housing. Then when we get to road taxes, that's based on an allocation of road miles. More road miles in certain districts get more tax money, even though the tax money is paid by all the people of the county. The point I'm getting to is, on this issue of economic and environmental justice, I see a large burden on CA where most of this is going to be done, is going to be in District 4. And I would like to see an allocation of more money going to the district of the origin of most of the money that'll come from the cannabis production. But I don't see that in this. So, if we have a de facto ban in certain districts, we can look at a map. Map number, on page number 16, if you're able to put that up. You can see that almost all the commercial ag is in District 4. Okay, you bet. And so, what I'm getting at is if we have different ways of sharing tax money in certain areas getting more because of road miles or affordable housing and what have you, I don't see any of that here. And certain districts will be benefiting on the burden of the people of District 4, which is a very low-income district.
So, nothing in the ordinances that are before your Board addresses how tax revenue will be spent? Those are policy decisions that are up to your Board to be made during budget time?
Right. So, that's the difference between verbal and actual written interpretation at this point.
Yeah, I'm not following.
And it's not in writing. I mean, how this is going to be allocated. Look at the green area and you see it's all in District 4. I don't see any much in the other districts. When you count the coastal land and also the one-mile setback. And so, I'm getting at the burden here.
And just as a point of clarification, it doesn't prohibit it in the commercial agricultural zone within the coastal zone and one mile. There's a different set of regulations on new construction within that area. So, the white area that you see with the, I don't know what that color would be, but I guess pink, that is about 98% within my district, shows that the overwhelming amount of CA-zoned eligible land actually falls within the second district. The green area that you're speaking of specifically just happens to be zoning that's outside of that coastal zone plus one-mile buffer, which has a different set of regulations on, for example, new construction of structures. So, it's not prevented by any stretch. And in fact, a number of the people that spoke today live in the second district, have greenhouses or other facilities within the second district that intend to and have registered to grow. So, it will definitely be within, the majority of it will be, commercial activity will be within our two districts. That's a fact. But I just want to make sure you understand the map. The map isn't saying that the white area is an area that's precluded, it's actually allowed. It's just within a different designation of some of the rules and requirements that fall under that map.
But it does show where future production actually could take place. Because when you talk about existing greenhouses and existing production, it is pertinent to the map here with the CA land.
So, cultivation is allowed on CA-zoned land per the terms of the ordinance? So, what is your question?
Yeah, okay. I have, I'm outside the one-mile buffer. Everybody else has the one-mile buffer, right, except for District 5. And then also, when it comes to setbacks and everything else on new or existing greenhouses, that's going to be, that's going to affect District 4 more than any other district.
I can't answer that question, but I want to make sure that you understand that it can be grown on CA properties within the one-mile buffer in existing greenhouses. To make sure that we're communicating with each other.
Uh-huh.
Okay. Because a second ago, I thought you said that it couldn't be grown on CA land within the one-mile buffer. And that's not, that's not correct.
If it's in an existing greenhouse?
Yes.
Right. So, it could be grown within the one-mile buffer if it's in an existing greenhouse?
Yes.
Okay, which is not going to change them at all. What about existing greenhouses in CA land in District 4? Is there going to be more greenhouses?
I don't know how many greenhouses there are in District 4. I haven't seen an analysis of that being done with District 4 as opposed to any other district. So, I just don't have, I don't have the answer, unfortunately. The staff may have, staff may have an answer. It's not really a legal question.
I mean, there are a lot of factors that will go into determining, you know, who ends up coming in and applying for licenses. Not every landlord wants to deal with cannabis. So, while it's true that there are probably more existing greenhouses in District 4, that doesn't mean that the overwhelming number of licensees will be in any particular district, right? We have-
But how many licenses could actually come from District, we'll say 3, and District 5, and District 1? I mean, look at the map. I mean, right there.
These are potentially eligible parcels, right? And this particular map deals with one set of variables. Depending on the ordinance that, you know, we land on, it's not just CA, of course. There are other zone districts that are allowed, and there are just, there are too many variables for us to definitively say who's going to apply and who's not.
Supervisor Capit, I don't remember this similar concern when we were talking about dispensaries where three-quarters of the dispensaries are in District 1. And if you're saying that we should, that the taxes generated should go to the district, we would have a lot more taxes being generated in District 1 on this. There's a shared burden that we have here as a community. And in District 1, we may not have a lot of CA-zoned land, but we have a lot of residential land. And this Board has supported efforts to increase the density in those areas. And our planning rules say that we're going to grow plants in the rural areas, and we've zoned the land CA. And so, you would expect that plants would be grown in CA-zoned land, and housing would be built in the residential zone land. So, that's how we balance this all out as a county through our general plan and the zonings therein.
Right. And then we get down to the ag land again, and whether, you know, we're talking about local ag land, probably the best in the world based on quality of soil. And then it comes down to, you know, the nursery effect that was mentioned with the flowering of plants. I would like to see some of that combined in the same, you know, existing greenhouses where you, just like a nursery, where if I was to go buy a bush or a plant, they say, well, we have the one gallons over here, and we got the five gallon over here, and we got the, you know, the bigger plants over here. It's all in one place rather than spread out. So, how do we, we're eliminating stress on ag land if we have it more locally centralized than, rather than spread out.
Well, that's the way it is now. In our, in the current draft ordinance that you have before you, we've basically created a box, and you can put whatever you want in the box, and you can call it whatever you want. You can call it mature, you can call it flowering, you can call it nursery, you can call it immature. For purposes of our staff, it's very difficult for them to enforce a code that's based on principles that don't reflect local concerns. And basically, what we're hearing is that, is that, is that certain folks would like to change the definitions in the code, in our code, to model the state code. But the state code, when it was drafted, wasn't concerned with the issues that our staff was concerned with in drafting our code. And so, it's kind of like trying to fit a circle into a square in some respects. That's staff's perspective. Other people can, you know, have other opinions, and your Board is free to make whatever decisions it wants to make on those issues.
And then we have the issue of odor, especially near residential ag. We had one gentleman mention, you know, quarter mile, but I mean, wow, that must be the direction of the wind, too. But it also comes down to how much. So, how are we protecting residential ag that is close by commercial ag? And I'm thinking of the Weelock area off of Green Valley Road near Montevista School. There's a community there, and that's the dividing line of District 4. How do we, how do we protect them from, you know, that, the odor that's coming in? It would have to be in a greenhouse, right?
Well, I'm going to direct that question to staff because they've done a ton of research on odor prevention, including, you know, what's being done in other states and the like.
Well, as I said in my opening remarks, that odor is a big problem, particularly for outdoor grow. So, we're not requiring folks to be indoors at this point. So, it is easy-ish to mitigate an indoor grow, but for outdoor, we've looked and talked to other jurisdictions and- But for outdoor, we've looked and talked to other jurisdictions, and there's no sort of silver bullet. There is a measuring device that is used in Colorado, but to our, as far as our research indicates, that's only been used for indoor grows. They've never applied that to outdoor grows in terms of how they measure.
Right.
So, we didn't recommend going with that. It's certainly something that we can look at.
But the outdoor grow would be in the CA land?
Outdoor, not, that's not restricted to.
And that's why I'm getting back to that map, you know, on page 16, where the outdoor grow could actually have an effect, odor effect, on the residential ag.
It certainly could have an effect in a number of different situations. But so could a legal personal grow that we don't regulate of six plants that can be grown right up to the property line. So, it will be difficult for us to act on anything that is just an odor complaint. If somebody complains, we will track. We will monitor. We will look at where the complaints are coming from. And as I indicated earlier, if we need to modify somebody's license because we're receiving an inordinate number of complaints about the odor, they may have to move back. We may have to increase the setback. They may, in a worst-case scenario, either not get a renewal or have to go indoors. It really is site-specific.
Okay. And one that affects actually another district more than all the others, and I am concerned about it, that it is protected, and that would be timber production. The redwood forests are the greatest carbon banking trees in the entire world. And if we're cutting down redwood trees in order to put in marijuana grow, that's going to have a tremendous stress and effect on the environment of Santa Cruz County. So, we do have redwood trees and production in District Four, but how strict are we going to be on that? I want to make sure we don't ruin one of the greatest parts of our county.
Well, we're not allowing any new cultivation sites to occur in timber production. The carve-out that we have recognizes that there are some existing cannabis cultivation sites. Those we would review, but they would also have to pass all of the other thresholds and pass, you know, fires review and everybody else before they would be able to secure a license. So, there is no new development under the current draft in timber production.
And the effect of water diversion could affect actually the growth and health of trees in the neighboring areas.
Every licensed applicant will have to submit a water efficiency plan, and they will have to designate where they get their water, and that will be reviewed by our county as well as the state. And those requirements are pretty strict.
And here's, pretty much wrapping it up. A future habitable structure. Let's say I have RA land, and I want to put an ADU or I want to put something on it. But before I put out my plans, somebody in that CA land has a marijuana grow, cannabis grow, that is within the 200-feet buffer zone. Are they going to have the right to keep it there, or are they going to have to move if I get the okay to build some kind of a structure, habitable structure?
The setback to habitable structures would not impact anybody's ability on an adjacent parcel to construct a structure. But that doesn't mean that the neighbor who may have established a cannabis grow is precluded from getting a renewal.
Okay.
We would evaluate it like we do everything else. Remember, these are annual. So, every year, we will be looking to see about impacts of all sorts. But there's no de facto, you know, prohibition against somebody who's already established. But you're more than willing and able to come in and apply for your ADU without restriction.
They could build within the buffer zone, but they would have to put up with the marijuana grow.
To some extent, that would be true, yeah.
Well, I guess it's more than to some extent. It's probably, absolutely, yeah. Okay. And I think that pretty much, I want to thank you for all the work and everybody's effort. I will wrap this up by saying, when it was medical marijuana, three, four years ago, we've been talking about this, I was one of the number-one, you know, number-one in agreement with everybody else on doing something because of the humanitarian part of it and everything. Now, we're dealing with recreational cannabis, and that's because the state did vote for it. But also, the state did put burdens on us as a county. I'm concerned about, you know, cannabis is a drug. We're not talking about a strawberry or a raspberry. And so, I see the benefits and I see also the, you know, drawbacks. But recreational use, I don't want to see my kids doing it, and I don't really, I feel for other families. It's getting harder and harder to raise a family with pressure from all kinds of things. And I just think we have to keep in mind, we're dealing with an actual drug, and we do have to be careful when it comes to recreational use rather than medical use. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Capit. Supervisor McPherson.
Yeah, thank you, Chair friend. I wanted to make just a general statement about, then some suggestions on the 18 recommendations from the Planning Commission, and then a couple other directives, if I might, that I would like to see included in any motion that would come up. And I think that we should all speak before a motion is made and then go on that plane. This has been a long haul. I mean, it's been more than 20 years since medicinal marijuana was approved in this state. And then, of course, just over a year ago, voters approved the recreational use. And we have come a long way, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate, as has been mentioned already, with the Planning Commission and that day-long nightmare that they had to go through to get us to this position, to get focused on what we need to do here. I want to thank the Planning Commission, the Cannabis Licensing Office, also the C-4 Committee that took some years to oversee this, too. Thank you very much because we really needed all that input. The, you know, what we're with now, is it too lenient or is it too strict? I guess that depends on the eyes of the speaker. So, it's not going to be perfect in the eyes of many, probably most. But we have an obligation now to implement an ordinance and a policy that will best serve the County of Santa Cruz and its residents. The overarching concern continues to be what will commercial cannabis operations have, the impact it will have on residential areas, as well as the protection of our natural resources. And as far as the county budget's concerned, it's become very evident that this result of this green rush of a few years ago is not going to result in a goldmine for the Santa Cruz County budget. And it's going to be a lot of effort that's going to be, have to be done by multiple departments to enforce this and do it correctly. And then how the revenues are deposited is still a very serious question that's going to have to have oversight from the state and federal level as well. But at this point, I'd like to direct my attention again to the recommendations by the Planning Commission. And without verbalizing on each of them, I'd like to say that I do support their recommendations one through six, nine, 11 with the caveat, and 13 through 18, with 14 also the date of that concern. On the five proposals that I've mentioned, number seven, I think the Planning Commission's intent is good, but I believe the staff option to increase the outdoor cultivation of habitable structures on neighboring parcels to 400 feet is acceptable. I think that would be proper for neighborhood protection in particular. On number eight, I think we should allow both suggested options that the Planning Commission put to us, and that would be to allow a limited subset of Class II extraction processes. That is, activities don't involve ethanol or CO2 extraction on rural agricultural zone properties. I think we should allow Class II extraction on larger RA-zone properties or with increased setbacks to neighboring properties. That was number eight and the two options that were mentioned. On number 10, I support the staff recommendation to reduce the land use process to Level Four, which maintains public noticing requirement, but not the time and expense of a public hearing. As was mentioned, we have hundreds, 750,000. We need to get through these as quickly and as efficiently as possible. And it would be a bureaucratic nightmare, I think, to try to do this following Level Five standards. And I also think we should allow a Level Four review for all cannabis cultivation operations under 10 acres. On 11 and 14, I think it's important we have some consistency about the dates that we're using. And it's 2013 or 16. I think 2013 seems the best, but I would be open to other discussion from my colleagues. And that was for the two on items 11 to 14. On number 12, I agree, but I just wanted to ask, is there a reason other eligible property owners and other-than-commercial ag zones can't have the same consideration as is allowed on that number 12?
Well, this speaks specifically to the eligibility requirement for farmers. So, right, so the eligibility extends to folks who either registered or folks who had been farming for non-cannabis farming. And so, the way it was worded, it wasn't clear that that would include property owners of farms who didn't themselves participate, if that makes sense. So landlords.
Okay. I think that's clear, then. And if it's not, if my colleagues think we need further clarification, I'd be open to that. Okay. So, the recommendation would be fine on 12. I additionally, well, I think it's important that was mentioned that this does not allow new production on timber zones at this time. So, I think that needs to be made clear, and we have. There's a couple other directives. The statement about the definition of a canopy, I think to have some consistency with the state, it would be important, and I think we should integrate that in our policies as well. I'm not saying that we should follow everything the state has said, but I think that would be the right move for us to do as a county. In addition, just a few other things, a couple directives or suggestions I would have that above and beyond what the Planning Commission mentioned, to, I think that we should allow for provisional authorization of local operators who are in good standing, and you know who they are at this point, while they seek approvals from the Planning Department and the Cannabis Licensing Office. We've got a tight time squeeze here. I don't want to be, I think we want to just be fair, and I don't think this is going to create a new rush, so to speak, because we know where these operations are located. I would like to also, as a directive, and not part of a motion maybe, well, just a suggestion to direct staff to continue working on, with the industry and state officials on how to provide and protect compassionate use programs. And I'm hearing my county council say, wait, just stop right there and don't go any further than that. And I agree. This is going to have to be a state, Santa Cruz County, state decision, and we need to be part of that. And I would very much like to be part of that and engage with the state legislators, departments who are doing this, to see how we can implement that. And Santa Cruz County is a shining. We know that Santa Cruz County is a shining example of how that works and how it can work well. So, I would like to just suggest that direct staff to, we'll just keep on top of this and promote it at the state level, and so we can implement it as need be. And finally, to direct the staff to report back quarterly, and maybe you think would be semi-anally, but to be reasonable about what we're going to be, what the rush is going to be here, on the number and types of license applications and approvals, and information on the most common obstacles regarding legality. I think that, I don't know if quarterly is too, you've got enough on your plate, but I'd like to be reasonable about it, but certainly semi-anally, but I would, quarterly, I'd prefer to have a report on that. So, those would be the three directives I would like to have on top of my opinion on what the Planning Commission has recommended and what we've heard from the audience today. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor McPherson. Thank you for walking through those items, too. Supervisor Coonerty.
I guess I don't have any questions. It's hard to follow where we're going to end up. So, maybe we could just, if we could work through after, if you all have any questions, but then we work through each of the Planning Commission recommendations or bunch some together in a group and move forward. Because I have comments, but I'd probably prefer to wait until we have each one of these items in front of us.
Okay. I will come back to Supervisor Leopold.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks to the staff for working on this. You know, we've only been at the cultivation license efforts for about five years. We've been, I think the first letter we brought about dispensaries was eight years ago. So, having a state regulatory system allows us to better move towards our final square here, which is to have a good set of regulations. And I feel as though we're very close by what we have here. I appreciate the public input we have consistently received on all sides of this issue to come to where we are today. We took hours and hours of public testimony. We've put together the C-4 Committee to hear from many different voices. They spent hours and hours and hours and hours trying to come up with recommendations which were incorporated in ordinance. And then we took more testimony about what people thought about this. So, this is, whether you like what we have here or not, this has been a very inclusive process. And it's emblematic of who we are as Santa Cruz, which is we try to bring in different voices and ensure that every voice is heard. And I think as we continue, do these final steps to put an ordinance in place, I think it's going to reflect the community well, even if your particular item isn't included. The efforts that we've made to include all these voices are important to how this board is going to end up voting on it. I thought that the Planning Commission did a very good job in, over their two meetings, to come up with a series of recommendations, the most of which I support. I think that, in talking with my planning commissioner, he told me, he goes, "I'm not really happy with the legislative role you've given us." That that's really our responsibility here as a board. But we gave them some legislative responsibilities, and I thought that they approached it, and some of the solutions they came up with were very good. And I think that reflected the input that they received from people. I think it's important to note that unlike other entitlements that the county gives, these licenses are only a one-year in duration. And that gives us a chance to make changes where we haven't gotten things right. And I want to encourage people to think that we have a good set of environmental regulations. And what we are trying to do here is bring people into a system that will be regulated and will help us reach the greatest level of environmental protection as we can. I think that there are parts of what the Planning Commission's recommendations I think that there are parts of what the planning commission's recommendations that work really well, and there are some parts that don't. This item number seven, which is allowing property owners within 1,000 feet to have a say in what happens on someone's property, is, doesn't work. I think it's an open invitation to extortion. I think that if I didn't like something, or if I wanted to get a free cannabis, or if I wanted something from my neighbor, I have a big stick to wield, and I'm not sure of the legality of that. I'll let the lawyers decide. But I think that, I talked with our agricultural commissioner, and you can spray pesticides on your property, and all you have to do is notice your neighbors. And when we look at that, the idea of odor is much more subjective than the chemicals that are involved in pesticide spraying. So, I don't think we should have higher regulations around something like odor than we do for chemicals that we know can kill you if you have too much. And so, I think that of all the recommendations, I don't support this one. I'm not sure that a larger buffer in any way helps or not. I think that that's the goal of a one-year license, is to be able to come back and say, "It's not the fear of that smelling on my property, it's the experience of smelling on my property." And we'll have a better sense about that once we hear from people. These outdoor growing periods are basically once a year, and so there will be a limited period of time where that smell, if it's a problem, would be a problem, and then we have an annual review process where those kind of impacts could be taken into account. So, I would be comfortable leaving out seven completely. I also think that what we've been trying to do with these regulations is to allow commercial, recognizing that we would prefer these cultivation, commercial cultivations to happen in places where we've designated commercial agriculture activity to happen, which is why we're trying to set a lower bar for commercial ag zone parcels, because in our general plan process and what we thought and what people, when they purchase property, understood is they were next to a commercial ag operation. And so, I think it makes sense to keep those bars low. I also think that we should expand our viewpoint on several other zone parcels and reduce the barriers, because if it's not going to be on commercial ag and we want it, and it's going to be grown indoor, we look at M1 or C4 parcels, even C2 parcels, either commercially zoned parcels in which we have, in which the growing is going to occur indoor, in which we have restrictions in place or requirements in place that would require scrubbing of the smells so it doesn't impact. When I looked at the M1 zone parcels, there's only about 75 in the county, all but three of them are in my district. And so, I looked at each one of these parcels, and for the vast majority of them, they are surrounded by commercial, other commercial areas. And so, I think that we, as a board, should say, if people are going to grow this plant, and they're not going to grow it on CA, M-zone parcels make sense. And I think it was, we should look at these legal non-conforming structures that are there, because I have them all over my district, as we all do, and I think we should give some discretion to the cannabis licensing officer to make it a judgment about what the impact would be, because if you look at the SoCal Research Park, which is generally surrounded by all commercial activity, there is a house, legal non-conforming, that's there. But we have identified that, and for all intents and purposes, we've zoned the area for commercial activity. There's a house there, there's been a house there for a long time. We should be promoting commercial activity in that area, and so I think we should lower the bar for that, and frankly, I would do it for C4 and C2 as well, and have a, not have to go to Level Five and be treated the same way as CA. I think that makes sense for us. The question about the process, I think, is a real one, and it's a real one just because we have set up a system where we told people that if you registered, that we were going to limit the registration to those people who registered for a license, and that some of those people have made choices and have started the statewide process. I'm not completely clear on the state licensing process, but when I see the number, when I look at that 750 number, and when I see the number of people who'd have to go through a Level Five process, I question whether we have the resources to be able to do that effectively. And one of the things we've always tried to do is try to sync this up with the state process to ensure that we had something that worked for people who were trying to follow the rules. And so, having a Level Five process for everything, to me, seems completely impractical. Clearly, to me, the commercially zoned properties of CA, of M, of C2 and C4 should not have to go to that level. And I think you can make a case that even RA zone parcels shouldn't be required to go it, but if there's notice and either the supervisor or the, or they get a lot of concerns raised by residents, that that could be kicked up to a Level Five process. We do that for vacation rentals, where if people have, get the notice that a vacation rental's coming, and they can tell us that there's been a problem with that already, that we kick that up. I think that's a model that works, and I think it's something we should consider as a board. I do think that when this comes back in April, that the cannabis licensing office and planning should provide us with some information about how they're going to deal with this. I think that in our effort to try to bring this to a place where, again, people who are trying to follow the rules can actually follow the rules, and there's this temporary license from the state, and there's a certain number of days and everything, we should be clear about how we're going to do this, you know? And during the Great Recession, we got an extraordinary number of assessment appeals. And so, what do we do? We appointed a second assessment appeals board to try to process those, and that may be one of the strategies we want to look at on a temporary basis, to be able to honor the process that we set out and expedite it as well. And so, it would be helpful, and I think we should make a direction, is to hear from the staff about their ideas about how this is going to be addressed, and to give people an expectation about how long things are going to take. And I think we can find balance to meeting people's concerns and also expediting it, if there's some thoughtfulness that go on in there. That may involve some temporary reassignments, or some temporary staffing, or something to be able to move through this first period that we're going through. I support Supervisor McPherson's efforts to try to get us to look at the compassionate use. I think while there's not much that we can do as we wait for the state to make changes, we could direct our chair to write a letter to the appropriate legislators or departments indicating our interest in wanting to have a clear set of rules to allow the compassionate use to continue, as has happened here in Santa Cruz for many decades successfully, and meeting the needs. I think we should do everything we can. We've heard that, there's no one who speaks against it, and we should use the power of our office in order to make that happen. So, I look forward to, I guess the one last thing is, the question of definition, this was something that we talked about when we met here February 6th, and I'm still interested in having our definition sync up with the state definition. I do think that that's a good suggestion. I think the testimony we heard from members of the Farm Bureau today highlight that with training, it should be an easy way for us to define this, and will cause a lot less problems for us down the line. And so, I encourage the alignment of our definition of canopy and nursery with the state definition.
Thank you, Supervisor Leopold. Let me just begin by thanking all of you for the civility and constructive tone of today's meeting. Overall, this has been a very productive discussion over the last few years, and I do appreciate that we're working toward a resolution here. I have a couple of questions of staff about what it would mean to implement some of the things that my colleagues are asking for, and then I'll get into discuss, through the planning commission's recommendations, the things that I'm aligned with, because we may, as Supervisor Coonerty had noted, be able to take a chunk of it at once and then move on an item by item. But we had a discussion, we had a discussion in February about what it would mean to align the canopy definition as the state. There were concerns about what that would be. We directed staff to look at that. There's language in our ordinance now that, or the proposed ordinance, I should say, that I believe addresses actually the concerns of both the environmental need as well as meeting the needs of the Farm Bureau and the nurseries, but could one of you, either on the legal side or the non-legal side, although when I look at here, literally everybody sitting up here is actually a lawyer from what I can gather, but it's a lot of lawyers right here. If you could explain to the board the rationale for why we weren't aligned with the state definition, that would be useful, I think, for us to understand.
I think the canopy, actually, the canopy definition, except for the stacking provision that we added, does align with the state's by and large, right, in terms of?
The only, let me just jump in there. The way that it differs is in a lack of acknowledgement of immature plants. That's the distinction. But the 90% of the definition of canopy that we have is right in line with CDFA.
And the rationale for that is?
The rationale for that is that your board selected limits on what it wanted cannabis, a cannabis farm to look like, right? And it's strewn throughout our code, and it was negotiated by C4. These limits were discussed, debated, et cetera. You landed on them, and staff does not want to be responsible for changing those. That's a major policy distinction, to open up something that your board had given us direction on. If you want a cannabis farm to look like 5,000 square feet in a specific place, our version of that is that that's the amount of space that you want cannabis plants in, regardless of whether they're called immature, mature, flowering, nursery, whatever. If your board wants to change that, there's a variety of ways that you could do that. I mean, you could lift the limits and say that, lift the limits and then say that 25% is going to be devoted to what you call nursery stock, and that we can come up with a nursery definition of non-flowering. But the bottom line is that, is that staff has been concerned, and we've said it numerous times, about the enforceability of, with stretched resources, trying to deal with what is an immature versus a mature versus a flowering versus a non-flowering plant. And there's not much more to say about it, other than what we've said.
That's useful. I appreciate that. I mean, the point is, because what I've heard, both in February and today, is sort of this sense that it's just a simple thing, just align it, it's not that big of a deal, but there's generally a policy rationale in a five-year process as to why we landed where we did. It's generally not always the best idea to just arbitrarily, from the dice, just make a change that could have a pretty significant change to a policy across the board, until you've actually had a policy in effect. One of the things that's been discussed is there's a year review. Well, there's a year licensing component to this, then I think that from a policy rationale perspective, we should, we should really narrow in on what we've been narrowing in on for quite some time, and if it's needed to be broadened moving forward, it can be broadened. But I think it's actually a pretty significant shift, which is why I wanted to ask for that clarification. I wouldn't be supportive of doing that now, but I think that, because I think that we've come a long way to ensure that those needs are met, but I appreciate that component. Of course, it is within the board's purview should we need to change it, which is important.
Chair, I would just say, although we've been in this process, the C4 Committee was, I think, formed in 2016 or something, you know, the state didn't have its definition of canopy until relatively recently, and that, you know, the benefit of have a statewide regulatory structure is it starts, it creates the box in which we will operate in, and so as a reflection of that, it gives us a chance to refine what we've done. I understand your concerns, but I don't think it's a gross change to say we're going to sync up with the state definition.
I respect that. I just, I have a different view on that issue, but I think that that's something that the board will obviously take up.
I have a follow-up on that.
Just briefly, because I am trying to go through all these items.
Sure. I'll make it brief. With the canopy, if we're talking about centralizing and having, that would make it a lot easier to enforce also. When there's an inspection, if you're looking at the seedlings, then you're looking at larger plants, flowering plants. If they're in a canopy and they're all, that's part of stacking, right? It makes it a lot easier, rather than somebody trying to inspect one site over here for seedlings and one site over somewhere else.
Right. Now, as the plants mature, it would be a bit onerous for us to try to figure out when something had moved, and yes, by plant you can tell, but when you're looking at potentially hundreds or thousands of plants, it's a little different. What we really envisioned and what would be easiest for us would be to provide a box and say, "It's up to the individual cultivator to decide how they fill their box." We allowed stacking for very small plants, and the idea was that you wouldn't be penalized for having multiple layers. We wouldn't count all of those. We also reduced the minimum parcel size for the CA property to have essentially unlimited canopy with co-location, with, again, the idea that we would incentivize using existing structures and co-location to provide greater canopy limits, so that if somebody wanted to devote a big chunk of their business to nurseries, they would have adequate space for that. But just to be clear, the state, when they look at nurseries, they're looking at exclusively nurseries, like that is your business, that's all you do, and in that respect, the state says, "No canopy limit." But they're also not looking at land use and what it looks like to have, you know, new development to encompass that. So, a lot of what we've been talking about is propagation, where you have businesses that start from small and grow all the way to maturation, but that's a little bit of a different model than somebody who does nothing but nurseries. So, if that's your business model, then we would just assume you take the canopy limits that we've provided for and use that for your nursery.
All right. Thank you. So, moving forward, just on some clarifications, Supervisor McPherson had noted an interest in a provisional authorization. Can you just tell me operationally what that would actually mean, what that would look like?
It could take different forms. It could be an extension of what we have been doing with the letters that we've been providing, where we basically say that an actor is in good standing, they've paid their taxes. In this case, we, once we have ordinance language, we would know more about whether they comply with the basic zoning restrictions and parcel sizes and so forth. It is possible, although we haven't gotten there yet, that folks could resubmit the letters that they already have, those folks who have come through and obtained those from us. We could create, there's a placeholder for it, something that we call sort of provisional or something where we sort of park folks while they work their way through, for instance, a Level Five process, where they've satisfied our requirements, they've satisfied some level of like completeness or something like that, and we give them something that they can then take to the state to submit and obtain an annual license from the state.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. So I'll walk through just some of these items, and I'll move back to Supervisor Coonerty, I think, to try and start moving toward action on these items. I, actually, one last thing. I do have maybe just a slight concern on the CA, the 20 to 10 acre component. I don't have an issue with necessarily the reduction. We don't, we have something that exempts all CA from requiring any odor requirements at all. You don't have to have a scrubber, for example, in an indoor grow within CA property. Once we start reducing this down to 10 acres, I mean, basically what we're saying is that anything can go on a CA property. And I've been very supportive of encouraging this in proper zoned areas. But CA is adjacent in many areas in my district to residential areas. So if we're going to have no odor mitigation requirements at all on CA, and we're going to reduce the acreage, this is, I think, going to cause an issue. And if it means that you're allowed to at the year review it, but I don't see the tools by which the Cannabis Licensing Officer, when we functionally exempted CA from all these requirements, would necessarily be able to create a mitigation that would then stick, I think that we're actually creating an externality that we didn't really think of, and I have a concern about within that component. So I think that, I mean, the number one complaint we get is in regards to odor, and I think it's something that the board should take seriously. There are limited things that you can actually grow on CA in this side of the hill. For example, some of the more scented elements, say like a Gilroy growing garlic, or some of the green onions, would not actually succeed on this side of the hill in the same way. So people that are living even in those areas aren't used to the level of odor that we could be creating if a disproportionate amount of these grows occur in CA and we have no mitigations associated with it. So I would like to see that there actually be a process for ensuring mitigation, something that actually allows a review of the Licensing Officer to create or require. I'm still in favor of scrubbers in CA. I recognize that my colleagues didn't support that in February, but I think that we should have some element that recognizes that we could be creating a situation moving forward, as I believe a disproportionate number of these grows, just based on all the other elements that we are doing today, will move towards CA. And so that's my concern about the reduction of the 20 to 10. I don't know how we would do that, and I don't know how to really articulate that into a motion, but right now it's just left out there where it's a functional exemption. I think that's going to be problematic, because it's also an enforceability issue moving forward. Regarding odor on non-CA lands, I'm supportive of what Supervisor McPherson had noted on the 400 feet. I think Supervisor Leopold has a point. I'm not sure if 200 to 400 feet would necessarily make a significant difference, because it's basically the size of a football field, and during that time of when it is blooming, I think that 400 feet may also not be enough. But I think that we need to make a statement in our code of an expectation that to the degree possible odors are contained on site, and because of that, we have the setback requirements that allow for additional mitigations if need be by the Cannabis Licensing Officer.
Can you clarify that? You were talking about 400 feet?
The planning staff made a recommendation, so the Planning Commission made a recommendation that seems nearly impossible to enforce, which is the sign-off requirement of people within 1,000 feet. There are other concerns, not just of the enforceability of it, about whether it's a reasonable aspect. But I think that in and of itself, we should create something that allows for odor to be considered with the seriousness that I think that the community has with it. One of the recommendations of the planning staff is to increase our 200-foot setbacks of habitable to 400-foot, which is something Supervisor McPherson also noted.
So it could be expanded to 400 feet?
That's a proposal in front of you from the planning staff, a recommend, well, not a recommendation, but an option presented by the planning staff in front of you today.
That's big. Yeah, I like that.
So I agree too on the date consistent as 2013. It's already that way in the timber zone. I feel like the code should harmonize that throughout. I don't think it makes sense to have the 2016 date. I also agree that the no duty to enforce language has created an unnecessary amount of consternation within the community unnecessarily so, so we should just get rid of it. The 24-hour comment line isn't really actually a realistic option. I mean, there is, no one's going to be staffing it 24 hours a day. It kind of creates an unreasonable expectation. What we, I mean, we currently have, I guess in theory, a 24-hour ability to submit through online or when we expanded to the Citizen Connect. So I understand what the Planning Commission is trying to say on that, but I don't know that operationally it necessarily makes sense. I am actually comfortable, I understand and hear what my colleagues and the community have said regarding the higher level of review, but I feel that the highest level of review is actually reasonable, and I'll explain a little bit why. On Level 5, we currently actually have in our code that most home occupations actually require a Level 5 now. So if you view a cottage grow as a home occupation, and considering it's going to be commercial activity in a non-commercial area, you would have to get a Level 5 if you're doing another home oc at your house. And yet, we're now saying that apparently it's too onerous to do that for a commercial cannabis activity there. And so maybe the board, to be consistent, should either consider the other components of our code on Level 5 review on home occupations, or we should say that there was a reason by which we created that as a Level 5 to start with. We have a Level 5 for a fence height over six feet. We have a Level 5 for having a trailer installed on an agricultural parcel that someone's going to live in. We have a Level 5 for an ADU that's over 640 square feet. We have a Level 5 for a lot of things that I think a lot of people would consider pretty de minimis as far as what they are. So I don't consider a Level 5 review on a new commercial activity to be onerous, but I understand that that may not be shared by my colleagues. But I wanted to explain why it was that I had advocated for Level 5 in the first place, and I think it harmonizes with other elements in the code. So moving this back to you Supervisor Coonerty, I do see, based on everybody's comments, and I've tried to write them down, a relative consistency on there are things that we actually might be able to get through without having to do individual motions. And so please go ahead and make your comments, and then I think that we can take a chunk of this in a motion, then go through on individual points.
Yeah, that's, well, so I was going to, yeah, I was going to make a motion, and I'll, just for the clarity of the public and everyone involved, so item number, this would be items 1 through 6, 12, 13, 15, 16, and 18.
Let's say that slowly.
And I'm going to, I'm going to walk through each one, because I think people, because not everyone's working from the same numbers.
Let's say those numbers again.
1 through 6, 12, 13, 15, 16, and 18. So let me read those so that everybody knows, which is to delete the no duty to enforce provision. To retain all required, that's number one. Number two, retain the requirement for the mandatory site inspections as part of the initial review of all licenses. Three, retain the riparian setback provisions and retain the use of the riparian exception provisions. Require the best management and operations practices include language to ensure the water purveyors use truck water are legal operators. Five, include language to clarify that cannabis licensing official will determine and/or declare water emergencies. Six, eliminate exceptions to the minimum parcel size allowance. 12 is allow property owners of CA properties to qualify for a license application regardless of whether they actually farm the property. 13, remove the Q-zone designated sites from eligibility for commercial cannabis. 16 is to reduce the minimum parcel size from 20 acres to 10 acres for CA zone parcels when existing structures are used for co-location or master plans. Seven, not 17. 18, require all licensed cultivation sites to be accepted, be inspected at least once every three years.
You have 15 as well.
15.
Oh, sorry, did I skip 15. And 15, which was reaffirm the existing prohibition of the establishment of new cannabis development on timber production zoned parcels.
Is that a motion? Do you want to go for that on motion?
Well, I would like to take that as a parent motion unless there's concern by my colleagues before we go item by item on the other ones that I think that there are going to be more in depth. I'm just trying to run, be as efficient as possible on this one.
I would second that.
All right. So is that a, if you can make it as a formal motion, if you could actually move?
Yeah.
So we have a motion from Supervisor Coonerty and a second from Supervisor McPherson specifically just on these items. We will be going through the ones that we had a bitter debate of on point by point. So please, Supervisor McPherson.
Should we just wait for the directives and make that separate too, as I mentioned?
Yeah, I think it's up to the chair. The way I would work through it is, yeah, we go through each one of these by items, and then additional directives after that.
At the end. Yeah, I've got them written down what they are. Is there a discussion on these items specifically?
Okay. So the, we're going to vote on this after we're done right here.
That is correct. Just this set of items right here.
I'm a reluctant participant. I'm going along. I really want to vote yes on this. Okay. Can we add to this that that 400 feet is a yes or no? Can we carve out an area?
So Supervisor, let me just explain, Supervisor Caput, the item that you're concerned about, we are going to vote on separately. So we are only voting on, so we're not dealing with setbacks, we're not dealing with cottage, we're not dealing with an odor, we're not dealing with a number of things at this point. These were the items that seemed non-controversial from both the Planning Commission and the board in our discussion today, and those items that you're interested in, we're taking individually.
All right. And it's not anybody's fault. I always have trouble with District 2. And the reason I'm getting at--
Don't we all?
Let me just, let me just say, the room does with me, and a number of my constituents do too. So this is nothing new to me.
I want to clarify one thing. What makes us unique here is the dividing line is Green Valley Road. On his side, he has commercial ag. On my side, I have actually residential. And I don't see anything much about protection on residential. What is the setback residential from CA? Does anybody know that?
Yep.
Yeah. On Green Valley Road, I have that whole Mesa Verde neighborhood that's all residential. You cross into District 2 where all the trouble originates. And then, what is the setback?
The setbacks are not specific to Supervisor District.
It's not residential ag, it's actual residential.
So there's, the way that the ordinance is written, we have the 200-foot setback from cultivation area from, to any adjacent habitable structure regardless of the zoning.
Okay. And I'd like to see that extended if we're able to vote on that today, but I'm not, I'm not sure. Is that going to be something we'll vote on later?
It is, it's not a part of this motion, but those setbacks are a part of a discussion of another item that we will be voting on today. So yes.
All right. When it comes to the setbacks. Okay, and one last thing before we vote on this. The good part that I do like is the cost will come down. And when the cost comes down, that should have a great effect on illegal growth versus legal growth. Legal production, illegal production. It's kind of like, why would I buy white lightning from some still up in the mountains when I can buy a bottle of Jack Daniels at the liquor store? I mean, I wouldn't do it, right? I mean, one is, who knows what's going on up there, and the other one's bottled, certified, and legal. So that will have a great effect. The other concern that's been addressed that I do like is that we do have a duty to enforce. And at one time, I had a real hard time with that. We always have a duty to enforce the laws on the book, regardless of whether or not we agree with them. If they're the law and we haven't changed them, we have to enforce them. So that's going to help too. The last thing that's holding me back on this whole thing is, I understand people that are saying, not in my neighborhood, because you live in your neighborhood, and you've protected 90% of the Santa Cruz County in a lot of ways. But that other part in my area, it seems to be all or most in my neighborhood. And I have a big problem with that, because I have the CA land that's affected by most of this without buffers and everything else. So I, I'm probably the one who hasn't even decided how I'm going to vote yet, because I want to make sure it's not all or most in my neighborhood until we clarify that. So I don't want to go along here and then find out later that the other part is going to be turned down. I want a bigger buffer from the residential and from residential ag. If I can get a 400-foot buffer, then I can go along with this.
Okay. Well, that'll come up next. So just on these items though, we have a motion in a second.
Chair, I'm sorry, could we just respond to one thing that Supervisor Caput stated? So we want to make sure that everybody's on the same page. The lawyers are concerned about the idea to state that there is a legal duty to enforce our code. I know you didn't say legal duty to enforce our code. What you said is that there's a duty to enforce our code. If you meant a moral duty, I don't know whether you meant a moral duty versus a legal duty, but there is no legal duty to enforce our code. And we want to make sure that the supervisors understand what they're voting on, and that's why staff doesn't mind this removal of this provision, because it seems like it's caused a lot of consternation in the community. What staff was trying to do was be transparent in stating that staff gets to prioritize how resources are used. But we don't want there to be a statement left on the record or to have people walk away misinformed that there is some legal duty to enforce our code, because that is not accurate.
And why would we not have any legal duty?
It's not, it's not a legal duty that can be enforced by a third person, by a third party. In other words, a third party doesn't have standing to come in and force the county to, to enforce the code a certain way. I don't have an ability, for example, to sue the CHP and order the CHP to pull over that driver as opposed to that driver, as opposed to that driver. And I want to make sure that we're not miscommunicating that idea to the public, and that the public doesn't believe that the removal of this provision is going to allow a neighbor to come in and sue the county for failure to enforce a certain provision as to a certain cultivator, because that's just not accurate. Does that make sense?
Unless that cultivator is violating the code, though. I mean, what if they're, they're not taking care of the odor, they're not doing, you know, or what, for that matter, they're growing illegally?
Well, we have many code provisions, like for instance, an example would be an over-height fence, a fence that's over six foot that somebody didn't come in and get a permit on. You know, somebody could sue their neighbor and go to court and sue their neighbor for a failure to comply with the law, but they can't sue the county for failure to go in and enforce its code against that person.
But they could call the county to have the sheriff go over there and, or planning, code enforcement, code enforcement could go over there, look at it, and cite them?
Yes, absolutely.
They can cite them?
Code enforcement could go over and, and the Cannabis Licensing Office, someone can call the Cannabis Licensing Office at any point and say,
Sure.
Please, please go ahead, go over there and cite this person. And what the Cannabis Licensing Office does is it determines, okay, I've got 1,000 complaints, and I've got two people. So I've got to be able to prioritize where I'm going to go and when I'm going to do it, without having to run into court every 15 minutes, because a neighbor or a third party comes in and says, you're not doing what I'm asking you to do. That's just not the way the law is set up.
Okay. So basically, it's the same with, somebody has a big party going on on Friday night, they have amplified music, and it goes past 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock, 12 o'clock. It's under the same type of priority?
I don't know if it would be under the same type of priority, but I think you're, I think you're tracking it correctly, that basically in that instance, if the station, so to speak, is trying to deal with a murder, a robbery, and a burglary, and a party, they're probably going to prioritize the party as the least important thing to address at that point.
But they could cite, we could cite somebody for going beyond the ordinance?
Absolutely. That's the, yeah, and we're going, and staff's intention is to do that, yes, to cite people.
So I guess, but I, as the maker of the motion, let me just say, the reason, understanding that legal limitation, I think it's important that we send a message to folks that this is a whole new area of regulation, that we're going to hopefully have a lot of people come into the fold through, through our, through our licensing scheme. And then the folks who don't come in, both the people who have come in, as well as the overall community, has an interest in enforcement. And while there's no duty to enforce, I think us as elected officials and the sheriff's elected officials will feel an obligation to respond to community concerns as they come up, understanding that there are limited resources, but that, but that we don't want to send a message out, as some speakers noted today. today, that, that, that we don't, that we aren't going to enforce. And so I think as the maker of the motion, that's, it's important that I think we tell everyone in the community that while there is a, a lot of needs and a lot of prior, a lot of demands on our system, that this will be a, this will be a priority for us going forward.
I'd like to call the question.
Yeah.
Question's called. Or is there anybody that, well, the question's been called. All those in favor of ending debate on this item, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So now we'll go back to the motion. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously on items one through six, 12, 13, 15, 16, and 18. Now moving back toward the other items and additional direction that we have. Supervisor Coonerty, do you want to take a shot at it?
I'll take, sure. I'll take a shot, which is-
Starting at item seven?
This would, this would be just, I'm just going to do one item.
Okay.
As a, and I don't need to make these motions, but as a board, the, for item number seven, I would enhance the setback from 200 feet to 400 feet as my motion, to deal with potential odors.
So we'll read this. Item seven was to revise the best management practices provision regarding odor require that any cultivator operating in zone districts other than CA obtain written concurrence. Within 1,000 feet, the board is electing to delete that recommendation from the planning commission based on this. There's a recommendation on the floor instead to accept the planning department's recommendation, which is to enhance the setbacks, which are currently 200 square feet to, not square feet, 200 feet to 400 feet of habitable structures on neighboring parcels.
And if I get a second, then I-
So that's a motion on that. And there's a second from supervisor Capit. Is there discussion on this item?
And I, I guess I'll say, what I, I have real concerns. This is obviously one of the biggest neighborhood impacts we have. The, what gave me some, what mollified some of those concerns was your discussion that as part of the annual review, smell impacts could be a reason for modifying a license and/or revoking a license. And so I think that should create an incentive on an annual basis for people to make sure that they are not having an undue impact on their neighbors.
And as a point of clarification, supervisor Capit had asked, because CA and A can be adjac, or RA can be adjacent to each other, you didn't differentiate on CA. So just to be clear, that this would include CA habitable structures from CA to another or CA to CA?
From outdoor, this provision-
Thank you all.
For outdoor grow. We do not, this does not distinguish between zone districts.
That's correct. Is that your question?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a question as well.
What would go with that? If it's an indoor grow and they're, they're not containing the odor, then that would be something for the code enforcement to go out and look at, right?
Well, that's my question. Are we talking only about outdoor grows here or are we talking about outdoor and indoor grows? We would ask for clarification from your board on that.
Okay. So the answer to that was outdoor based on the understanding of staff. I, I still would like additional direction that something on CA for indoor as well be addressed. I don't feel as though, and even if scrubbers aren't the answer from the majority of the board, I don't feel as though staff has enough flexibility now to address an issue that was coming from CA property, especially now with the reduction that we just voted on from 20 acres to 10 acres to address that sense. So I, I don't, I don't have, I can't articulate what the language would be. This could be a direction that comes back as part of the ordinance in a couple of weeks. But I think that CA, there should be some component that allows flexibility for staff to create mitigations for CA parcels, even if we're not requiring a direct element of, say, scrubbers or a direct investment because it may be on a site, as you had mentioned earlier, Robin, on a site-by-site basis. Currently, CA is exempted from that, which is my concern.
I mean, we're trying to address the odor. I mean, if the indoor growth is causing an odor, then we got to have the same buffer for that.
Under the current ordinance, proposed ordinance, CA is exempted from that. Supervisor Leopold, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, I appreciate that. And I appreciate the, the question. I understand the people's interest in wanting to create a, a greater buffer for outdoor grows. And 400 feet is greater than a football field. It's better than 1,000 feet, which was more than three football fields. But it, we have no idea whether this actually will work or not, right? I mean, I, it, it's a pretty large buffer. I don't, I can't think of anything else in the code where we have these kind of buffers. Again, you can, you can spray pesticides within 200 feet of someone's house. And so it, it seems like the, this is, this is more feel-good than good policy and that, that, that I'm not going to support it because I think that it's not based in science or fact. It's based on feelings and emotion. And that's not a good way to make policy. We've worked very hard to, to, to try to wind it down, something that really works. And that's why I can't support this.
I understand that. That we do have some setbacks, as you know, 600 feet are setbacks from dispensaries to other locations like, say, schools as, as per the state regulations. So I don't think it's totally off, off kilter with some of our other requirements within the greater cannabis components that we have to have this setback. But it is true that we have nothing measurable or objective in that way. If the maker of the motion would be willing to at least have additional direction that staff come back with something in regards to CA that would give them the flexibility. So I'm not trying to open up this ordinance in a way that's concerning, but I just want them to have the flexibility when there's the, the licenses come up after a year that they actually can put in requirements that would address odor mitigations on CA properties.
That's a friendly, yeah, that's a friendly amendment.
Yeah. And just to be clear, we're still only talking about outdoor. And your concern about CA is that even indoor?
That is correct.
Because on all the other zone parcels, they're required to have the scrubbers and everything else.
That is correct.
And that's an enforceable.
That's correct. And I'm not saying that there needs to be a scrubber. I recognize on the February meeting, there wasn't three votes for that support. But on a site-by-site basis, I would like to see some flexibility after a year if there's an issue. That's what I'm bringing up.
Yeah.
Is there any additional discussion on this item?
Only that I, I think it should include indoor grow and outdoor grow. The odor is the problem. And again, if it's, if the indoor grow doesn't have to do it, then I think, I, I don't get it. I mean, so right now, the proposal is outdoor grow only.
With additional direction that, that staff come back on April 24th?
24th.
April 24th in regards to CA, that includes indoor, that would provide flexibility for odor mitigation for them, especially in the license renewal component.
What's the planning department's recommendation today? Indoor and outdoor or just outdoor?
The planning commission's recommendation just focused on outdoor and therefore the planning staff's recommendation, well, not recommendation, but options only included outdoor.
And then you're going to look at it and like come back on the 24th with a recommendation? I'm, I'm trusting you to come back on a recommendation for outdoor grow, but I don't know if it's coming or not.
It's coming on outdoor. So the, the, the motion today is to increase the setbacks for outdoor cultivation for all zone districts from 200 to 400 feet. That's an increase in setbacks for all zone.
Increasing from 200 to 400?
Yes. On CA specifically, in February, actually, an item that you had voted for did not require scrubbers on indoor greenhouse grows or structure grows within CA. So I've asked staff on a friendly amendment that my colleagues accepted to come back with language that would give them flexibility around odor mitigation on indoor grows within CA as well.
Okay. And I would appreciate if you do come up with a no on the recommendation, that you put it in writing that you're recommending no on restrictions on the odor within 400 feet on indoor grow. Rather than just the verbal, "We're not going to put it in," I, I want to see it actually. If you put yes, I'm going to be in favor of it. But if you, if you don't have a recommendation for it, I want it to be addressed in writing.
Okay. So we have a motion in a second with an amendment?
So there, there's just been a lot of discussion and back and forth, and staff is not clear on what this actual motion is. So if you could state it, stated in one, in one-
Sure. The motion is increase setbacks from outdoor cultivation to habitable structures on neighboring parcels from the current 200 feet to 400 feet with additional direction to come back to give with-
To give flexibility to the cannabis licensing officer for odor mitigation on CA land, including indoor.
Clear as mud.
It's a tough item.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions from our bank of attorneys? None? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
No.
It passes 4-1 with supervisor Leopold voting no. Supervisor Coonerty, if you want to try for item eight?
I guess I don't, I don't have as much of a, I don't have as much of an opinion on this.
Supervisor Mc-
I would say supervisor McPherson had proposed that we allow class-two extraction processes, those that don't involve CO2. And you can correct me, supervisor McPherson, if I'm wrong, on RA zone parcels and that they could include all parts of this, the class-two extraction process on property of a certain size. And I don't know whether you had an idea there, supervisor McPherson?
No, I didn't. I, I-
So item eight, so that the, the community knows of the planning commission's recommendation was to remove eligibility for class-two manufacturing operations in the RA zone district. The two options presented by county staff was to allow a limited subset of class-two extraction processes such as activities that involve ethanol or CO2 extraction on RA zone and allow class-two extraction on larger RA zone properties or with increased setback to neighboring properties. The discussion at the board is to accept these options, but to further define them right now. So it looks like option A is not an issue. Option B, we just need to define what a larger property would be defined as.
Yeah. I mean, my, my sense about the class-two manufacturing operations is that these are really non-volatile extraction processes. And so I understand the concerns, but I think if we say on RA parcels larger than five acres, that we would, that that would work out well.
I think that, that's acceptable. Yeah, fine.
Is there additional discussion? We actually have a, do you want to make that as a motion, supervisor Leopold?
I'll make it as a motion to allow the class-two extraction on RA zone parcels that, less than five acres that don't include any ethanol, CO2 extraction, and over five acres, all class-two manufacturing.
Second, I'll second that.
Is there discussion on this item? Additional discussion? Okay. I have concerns about this item, so I'll just be voting no, but I appreciate the work that people have put into this. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Item nine is to, the, under the planning commission's recommendation is to prohibit the joining of parcels to reach the minimum parcel size on RA zone parcels or SU zone parcels with mountain residential or rural residential general plan designations.
I, I guess-
Supervisor McPherson was in favor of this item when you brought it forward. So I don't know if there's anybody that actually wants to debate that element. I thought it was made clear from supervisor Leopold's questioning that this actually did not eliminate the 40% component, which is what the planning commission was aiming to do, but-
Yeah. I'm, I'm happy to move this recommended action. I didn't know if there was, if there was disagreement on the board about this, but I'll move that recommendation.
Second.
Yeah.
Okay.
My sense about the SU parcels is that I like that we found something that can allow people who've been operating to stay in place and as part of a longer-term planning effort to think about where it would be more appropriate. And I think that that's a, that's a good balance. I found that to be very useful for what the planning commission did.
Okay. Then we have a motion in a second to accept the planning commission's recommendation, which is to prohibit the joining of parcels to reach the minimum parcel size on RA zone parcels or SU zone parcels with mountain residential or rural residential general plan designations. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? That passes unanimously. So now item 10 was to add a new cottage garden license category subject to the following: a minimum parcel size of two and a half acres, maximum canopy of 500 square feet, limited to AR, ATP, and SU zone districts; continuous cultivation by the applicant since before January of 2013; registration by cultivator with the county in 2016; absence of complaints filed against the property within five years of applications; the applicant must reside on the property; all back cannabis business taxes must be paid in full; colocation and/or master plans are prohibited; a level-five permit processing; and the license is non-transferable.
This is where we, this is where we-
This is item number 10.
Yeah, number 10, the-
With a staff recom-
Yeah, the staff recom, but I think, well, the proposal I would like to see is a level four permit processing. I think that's-
I would support that.
So the option from, proposed by staff is to reduce the cottage garden land use permit process to level four, which maintains the public noticing requirement without the added time and expense of a public hearing. There's a motion from supervisor McPherson to create this new cottage garden licensing component with a second from supervisor Leopold with a modification that would reduce the permit process to level four is their discussion on this item. I express my concern with this. I think that the board should make a commitment then to look at other home occupations. I think it's odd that we, you know-
Well, just to that point, you know, when someone goes to get a home occupation permit, they get it. It doesn't come back every year, right? I mean, this, these licenses are very different than home occupation. I understand your point, but if there's a problem, it's going to come back for licensure the following year. We don't do that for home occupations.
Is there other discussion on this item with that one modification? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Moving on to item 11. Item 11 was to make the RA zone parcels ineligible for relocation.
So I would make, I would move the recommended action, make RA zones parcels ineligible for relocation, but you, and use the January 2013 date as, as the benchmark.
So to prohibit relocation to RA zone parcels unless the parcels have been under cannabis cultivation since prior to January 20 of 13, that's what you mean on the motion? Is there a second? There's a second. Is there discussion to the 2013 date?
I would just say, I understand the point. I think that RA zone parcels of a certain size should, we should include here. If we look at it at 10 acres or more, that's, that's a much shorter list. And we could find some balance of making sure that, that this worked. So I wouldn't, I'm not going to support the motion.
Okay. Explain that. I actually, you've got a good point there. I, what is the parcel size that we're voting on?
Well, this would say all residential ag parcels would not be eligible for relocation. So if I'm on a parcel and I want to move, I'm going to be grandfathered in because I've had good practices of whatever my zone parcel is. Now I want to move to a place with this RA zone parcel, I would not be able to do it under this motion.
Okay. Anyway, I'm ready to vote. Thanks.
Okay. I'm supportive of the motion. I have concerns, as was raised by some in the, in the community about people trying to move on to these parcels that weren't already engaged in this activity. I think the 2013 date is consistent with TPZ. I think it should be something that we harmonize throughout the code and we'll have an opportunity to on other items. So we have a motion to make RA zone parcels ineligible for relocation and to prohibit the relocation of RA zone parcels unless the parcels have been under cannabis cultivation since prior to January 2013. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
No.
So we have, motion passes 4-1. Supervisor Leopold dissenting on that item. Item number 14, to allow non-retail commercial cannabis cultivation eligibility for parcel zones special use with mountain residential, rural residential, or agricultural general plan designations subject to the following restrictions: sites with existing cannabis cultivation shall be subjected to a 10-acre minimum; sites where new cultivations proposed shall be subject to a 20-acre minimum parcel size. Staff had made an option on the January 2013 versus November 2016 component. Supervisor Coonerty, oh, sorry, supervisor Leopold.
I'd be happy to advance this with the, with the 2013 date. I think it, it makes some sense.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Just to read it again. Just to read it again, this would allow non-retail commercial cannabis cultivation eligibility for parcel zone SU with mountain residential, rural residential, or agricultural general plan designations, subject to these restrictions. The sites with existing cannabis cultivation have a 10-acre minimum; sites with new should have a 20-acre minimum parcel size. However, in order to qualify as existing cultivation site, evidence must be provided that the site has been under cannabis cultivation since before January of 2013. That's the motion that's on the table. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It passes unanimously. Item number 17 is to provide a 24-hour comment and/or message line within the cannabis licensing office. Go ahead, Supervisor McPherson.
We need to word this differently. I mean, we're not going to have somebody 24/7, so...
Robin, what are you doing at night?
I mean, should we say, I don't know, I don't even know if it's necessary. I think we want to let them know that they can call in with, if people have a problem, but I don't know, beyond that, you know, just simplify it.
We can ring your house. So, we do currently have a form on the website. I think that, I don't know if you need additional direction to add it on to Citizens Connect or things, makes a lot of sense to have the mobile app. And will there be a phone number that people can also call, just like they would with code compliance? And I don't know that we actually need to accept this item. So, I think that the board just is in agreement that we won't actually accept that recommendation from the Planning Commission. I don't believe we need action to not accept an item, correct? Okay.
Correct.
Item number, is that it?
I think that's the...
Okay, well, then, we do have actual recommended actions that were put forward by staff to actually schedule the public hearing, direct the clerk of the board, et cetera. So, items 1 through 4 of the recommended actions were to consider recommendations from the Planning Commission regarding proposed amendments to the code, chapters 7.128, 13.10, and 16.01, related amendments to the general plan local coastal program for cannabis licensing and land use regulations for non-retail commercial cannabis cultivation, manufacturing, distribution, to direct staff to prepare the final draft proposed amendments to the county code and general plan local coastal plan and related documents, including SEQA findings, to schedule a public hearing for April 24, 2018, at 9:00 a.m. or thereafter, to consider adoption and concept of the proposed amendments to the county code and general plan local coastal program, consideration of SEQA findings, and direct the clerk of the board to publish notice of the public hearing at least 10 days prior to the hearing date. I know we have additional direction on other things, but do we have a motion for these items?
I will move that. Second. Recommended action.
And a second. So, we have a motion and a second on these. We will have additional directions that we'll be providing. We could do those as a separate motion or as additional direction on this motion. I'll leave it to Supervisor Coonerty. Provisional authorization, compassionate use, and report backs, either quarterly or semi-annually, were something that had been presented by Supervisor McPherson?
And I was also interested in some of the other commercially zoned property to have a lower level of review.
That's right. So, is there, would we consider it a friendly amendment to direct the chair of the board to write a letter encouraging on the compassionate use program?
That is a friendly amendment.
Okay. Just Supervisor McPherson was allowing flexibility on quarterly versus semi-annually. Just an honest statement, what would be, can you do either, or which one would be preferred?
We can do quarterly.
Okay. So, a friendly amendment to have quarterly report backs, which is something I know the community had asked for, for a transparency perspective. The provisional authorization. It's understood what that is? Just making sure we got it.
It is.
Okay.
Friendly amendment.
And on the M1, in C4, was there another one?
Yeah, C2.
C2 parcel, to have those similar to the CA definition.
Yeah, level 4, and also flexibility or discretion to the cannabis licensing officer about setbacks.
Are there questions on that? Is that clear from staff? I want to make sure before we leave you on this, that you actually...
I'm sorry.
Please, no, please.
Setbacks with respect to non-conforming?
Yeah.
Specifically?
Yeah, the residential structures.
Yep.
Are there any concerns or questions on this? Is to move the recommended actions with additional direction. We have a motion and a second, includes the provisional authorization, the compassionate use letter, quarterly reports, and a couple of different zones in the manufacturing and commercial, to align them a little bit more with CA. And are there any other questions or concerns with that?
No, that was a friendly amendment.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It passes unanimously. Believe it or not, I don't want to adjourn anything, make sure I'm right. I believe that that is actually the entire thing that was before us today. Is that correct? Okay, so, we will see 99.9% of you on April 24th, and I appreciate all of your time coming forward and participating in the process.